This meeting to order. Let me begin by welcoming our guests here at the Administrative Office of the Courts that is hosting this September fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-three public hearing on the subject of Ibogaine, which is being conducted by the Kentucky Opioid Abatement Advisory Commission. Many of you who are in this room have traveled far at no small imposition upon time and resources to be here today, and we would like to welcome you to the beautiful Commonwealth of Kentucky, and we thank you for your presence. At this time, I am going to recognize and just name the individual commission members who are here so that we can establish that we do indeed have a quorum for the conduct of official business. Secretary Eric Friedlander.
Here.
Dr. Patricia Freeman.
Here.
Executive Director Van Ingram.
Here, sir.
Ms. Lauren Ferguson, who is Chief of Staff for Secretary, State Treasurer Allison Ball.
President Brian, thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Jason Rook.
Present.
Ms. Karen Butcher.
Here.
Ms. Von Purdy will be in attendance, but she will arrive at ten thirty this morning. We're going to go over briefly how this will play out over the course of the day. We have twenty-four individual testimonies. Each person will be allotted fifteen minutes over the course of the day to deliver their remarks. With whatever time is left in balance, each individual will be asked if they wish to entertain or to answer questions. You are not obliged, if you are a witness, to do so because this is going to focus on lived experiences, and lived experiences by virtue of being individualized are not subject to forensic cross-examination. However, should you so wish to answer any questions that are asked by members of the commission, you are free to entertain them and answer them as asked. And without any further delay, I will also mention that we have a business meeting scheduled for our regular commission meetings, which are October seventeen, two thousand and twenty-three, November fourteen, two thousand and twenty-three, and December twelve, two thousand and twenty-three at one P. M. All those business meetings are held at ten twenty-four Capital Center Drive, Suite two hundred, Greatford, Kentucky, four zero six zero one. And at this time, I would like to call our first witness. It is my honor to introduce former Kentucky Attorney General and former five-time United States Congressman and President and C. E. O. of the Foundation for a Healthy Kentucky, Ben Chandler.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. It's nice to be with you here today on what is, of course, always a somber occasion whenever you talk about a subject like this. And at the outset, let me just tell you that I'll be talking a little bit about my lived experience, experiences, and they are many on this subject over a period of at least thirty years in public life and personal life. And you all are more than welcome to cross-examine me or ask me any kind of questions that you want to on any of those subjects. I suspect that you may not find that I have a great deal of technical expertise to provide, but as far as lived experiences are concerned, I think you may find them interesting because I have seen this problem from almost every angle that you can see it from. It started in my life even before I was elected Attorney General, and my first cousin was an addict. And he was not only an addict of opioid, but he was of opioids, he was an addict of almost everything else. And to make a long story short, he went into just about every rehab center that you could go into of any note in this country. I think he went into as many as fifteen over the years to try to deal with this problem. The amount of money that was spent, family money that was spent on this problem, the amount of angst that the family had, and in addition to, of course, what this cost him in terms of his own personal life, was dramatic. The upshot of it was, after all of those efforts, at age thirty, he put a bullet in his head. He was like a brother to me. So I saw the depth of despair firsthand. Not too long after that, I was elected to be the Attorney General of this Commonwealth, and I'll never forget the day that a state policeman, I believe it was Sergeant Tim Lucas, came into my office and informed me of what he was seeing on the streets in eastern Kentucky, in particular in eastern Kentucky. And that was the emergence of a drug that none of us knew anything about called Oxycontin. This was in the nineties, and as you know, that's when the epidemic began. And we were concerned enough about it, the pills were being sold on the street. You all know all about this. I'm not going to tell you a chapter and verse about the history. I know Van knows it well, all of you, I'm sure, know it well. The upshot of it was, I formed a task force as Attorney General to try to find some answers to this problem, and we came up with the idea of Casper. And as a result, we suggested that we put the Casper system in place, and the legislature went along with us. Now, they didn't mandate it, which had to happen later, but ultimately, for what it was attempting to do, the Casper system was actually very successful. In fact, you could almost say it was too successful. It suffered from the law of unintended consequences because what had happened, of course, is these Oxycontin makers and makers of other opioid products over the years had created a market, and that was a tremendous market of addiction. And I don't want to digress too terribly much, but this goes back to the beginnings of humankind, I think, particularly opioid use, and we know that there have been wars fought over it, commercial wars fought over it in one of the low points of the British Empire. They attacked the Chinese just for the purpose of being able to continue to addict them for commercial purposes. A horrible chapter in human history. In any event, we had this, we passed, got this law passed, and the consequence, the unintended consequence, was that over time, it actually worked really, really well, but the market was still there, and here come the cartels, here come all of the other people with opioid products, and they come in and they feed the market. It's there, and they supply it. And the damage, again, I'm not going to try to tell you all what the damage has been, but when I was in Congress, we appropriated enormous sums of money to try to deal with this problem over time. We spent money on rehab like it was, you know, just growing on trees. I mean, huge amounts of money. I hate to even think about the amount of money that's being spent on this and has been spent on this. And in my opinion, despite the best efforts of a lot of people, and let me just be clear about this, there are a lot of people who have been working in the trenches on this problem for a long time. They are well-meaning, they work hard, they are involved in a mission of mercy, in my view, to try to help people. And I don't want anybody to take my comments as criticizing their efforts because their efforts have been well-meaning, and they've worked their rear ends off to try to solve this problem. But we have not been able to solve the problem, in my judgment. It continues on, and it continues on because it is, to a large extent, intractable, and a lot of it has to do with this addiction, this deeply felt physical addiction that people have, and it needs to be broken. And we have not yet come up with the tools necessary to break that addiction. I'm hoping, I'm hoping that Ibogaine is part of the answer. I hope that that's the case. Now, I don't suggest to you that it or anything else is a silver bullet. This is a difficult problem that we face, and I don't know that there ever will be a silver bullet. But I got another dose of just how hard it was this year. After probably fifteen years of addiction on opioids, my brother, who could not get the pain medication that he felt like he needed. Now, as you all know, with pain, it's hard to know what, how much medicine somebody needs to deal with their pain. But I can tell you, he thought he needed more than he was able to get legitimately. So he got some illegitimately. In January, he overdosed on fentanyl. It was a very difficult thing, as you can imagine, for our family. So I tell you that just to let you know that we have dealt with the depths of despair with this problem. And not only have I had it in my own family, I've been in the homes of people who've had loved ones die. I've been to many public meetings over the years, holding hands and hugging and empathizing in the strongest possible way with the people that, well, people who've suffered. And while my family has clearly suffered, there are very few families in this Commonwealth who have been immune to it. I can't begin to tell you the number of families that I know that have suffered. The bottom line to me is, despite the best efforts of so many people working on this problem for so many years, and I mean that, they've worked their tails off, and they care deeply, we have been unable, in my judgment, to solve this problem. It continues to be intractable, and we need as many tools as we can get. And I believe that a drug like Ibogaine is, from what I have read, it has the potential to make the difference that we need to have made, or at least a big difference. It's a tool that we can give the people who are working in the trenches, which will give them the opportunity, maybe, maybe, to break this cycle of addiction and to actually save quite a number of lives. And I endorse anything that we can do to get that done. Now, we have spent, again, as I said, we've spent untold amounts of money on this problem. I don't think anybody's probably got a real figure that can tell you how much we've spent on it. What you all are suggesting we spend on the development of Obegane, Ibogaine, excuse me, is a drop in the bucket compared to what has been spent over the years to try to deal with this problem, and spent, quite frankly, to a large extent unsuccessfully. We have successes, but we have a whole lot of failures, and I've seen those failures in my family, both my cousin and my brother, in and out of facilities, strong efforts to try to break the chain of addiction, both of them no longer with us, and lives essentially wasted because of it. That's all I've got, Mr. Chair, and members of the commission, and if you all want to ask me anything about it, please do.
Thank you for your testimony, Mr. Chandler, and sharing those very visceral, personal details. At this time, with four and a half minutes left, we will go from my right to my left. Are there any questions for Mr. Chandler, starting with Secretary Friedlander?
No questions. No questions. Thank you, Beatty, for coming.
No questions. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chandler.
My pleasure, and good luck to you all. I know you've got a lot of tough decisions to make. It isn't easy, and I just hope you, I hope you make some progress. I really do. It means a lot to everybody.
Thank you for honoring us for being here. This time, I'd like to call Mr. Dakota Meyer, one of Kentucky's few living Congressional Medal of Honor recipients and a retired sergeant from the United States Marine Corps. Mr. Meyer.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and the commission. It's truly an honor to be here today. Today, I stand before you to share my deep, personal perspective on a matter of utmost importance, the prescription of opioids and medications, particularly within the context of Kentucky's two hundred and ninety-five thousand veterans and their families. My name is Dakota Meyer, and I had the honor of serving in the United States Marine Corps. I was a Marine sniper, and I served in Iraq and Afghanistan and was the recipient of the Medal of Honor. My time in the Marine Corps fulfilled the greatest calling of my life. As fulfilled with pride as I am about my service, I can't deny the fact that combat left lasting scars on my psyche. I'm here today to shed light on the harrowing experiences I've witnessed and I've lived through, as well as to advocate for change in how we approach pain management and mental health within our veteran community. I remember it every night, the day that I had to take another man's life with a rock. That moment haunts me to this day still, a constant reminder of the horrors of war and the cost of our freedom. I received the Medal of Honor for the actions that day, but the real battle had just begun. Ten years later, the trauma was still with me. I would wake up in cold sweats, struggling with anxiety attacks, and one of my biggest fears, one of my biggest fears was that my young daughters, who used to come in my room after their own nightmares, would unwittingly witness the aftermath of one of my own. This is the reality of post-traumatic stress disorder, the silent enemy that lurks within the minds of many of our veterans. When I first returned home from Afghanistan, like many veterans, the V. A. prescribed, began prescribing medications to manage my symptoms. At first, it seemed like the only solution, but I soon realized that this path led me nowhere that I wanted to be. The symptoms persisted, and the medication brought itself its own challenges and side effects. I felt like I tried almost everything. I toggled between medication, alcohol, and dangerous coping habits, just trying to do something to be able to get relief long enough to be able to enjoy the life that I had fought for. Back then, I believed that being in Iraq or Afghanistan, and even some of my own worst days in Afghanistan, were truly a lot easier than it was to be here in the state of Kentucky. I found myself battling with the relentlessness, demons of PTSD and depression. It felt like an endless, agonizing struggle that no matter what amount of therapy or medications I could go to could alleviate. And then it wasn't until two thousand and nineteen, years after leaving the service, that I truly began to confront and treat my PTSD. I learned about a promising method for treating PTSD symptoms known as Ibogaine, and it offered me a true path to recovery that I had never even imagined was possible. Ibogaine allowed me to confront the traumas that haunted me, to process and understand them in a profound way. The experience was intense and transformative, helping me break free from the suffocating grip of PTSD and depression. It provided me with renewed sense of purpose and strength to rebuild my life. Ibogaine's potential to offer hope, to help others facing similar struggles, can truly not be overstated, and I believe it deserves the attention and support it needs to become a legitimate, a legitimate and accessible treatment option for those who desperately need it. Listen, I grew up in this great state of Kentucky. This is still home to me, and I know folks in this room, in this room, have what you consider to be a difficult decision, but let me help you with that. Ibogaine saved and gave me back my life. Ibogaine wasn't just another drug the V. A. or medical community prescribed that would leave me addicted and depressed, that are desperate and forever lost inside my own mental dungeon. It's important to recognize that there are alternative approaches to managing the pain and trauma, not just for veterans with PTSD, but for anyone who is dealing with depression and anxiety. It's crucial that we explore these options more thoroughly. Fentanyl and other opioids have fueled the worst drug crisis in the history of the United States, and I see it every day as a firefighter. According to the National Center for Health Statistics, more than fifteen hundred people die every week from taking opioids. It's a well-known fact that those receiving the highest dose of opioid pain relievers from the V. A. Hospital are more than twice as likely to die by suicide. I saw and continue to see firsthand how the military community is impacted by the opioid overdose crisis by, I've lost seventeen members of my unit since I've been home, not from the war overseas, but from the war we have here. And I'm so thankful to know that there are other methods to help people pull through this. It's time we explore innovative solutions like Ibogaine treatment and consider its potential in treating these debilitating conditions. Ibogaine has and continues to show promise in addressing the addiction and mental health disorders in some studies, and its approval by the FDA could offer a lifeline to countless individuals. We owe it to those who have sacrificed for our country to leave no stone unturned in our efforts to provide them the care that they deserve, and in doing so, help mitigate the opioid crisis that plagues our nation. My journey is just one example, but it reflects the experiences of countless veterans that you're going to hear from, who have struggled with addiction and ineffective treatments. Opioid prescriptions have led many down a dark path of addiction, compounding their challenges, and preventing them to seek help they truly need. My ask of you is to make the right choice. Kentucky needs to be on the right side of history with this and to be the leader of the nation. We must reevaluate our approach to pain management. We have to prioritize mental health and explore innovative solutions like Ibogaine that have shown promise in treating PTSD. Research and approval of Ibogaine treatment will be a significant step in that direction. You all have the power to make the difference. Ibogaine could be the answered prayer for so many Kentuckians, and you all could help answer that. Thank you all for your time and consideration.
Are there any questions for Mr. Meyer, from any commission member?
Yes. I'd like to know the impact on your family.
Thank you so much. Yeah, you know, I went down in two thousand and nineteen and received this treatment truly at the end of my road. I'm not a weak man. I'm not somebody who seeks out addiction. I was a guy who was trying to get some relief, and I went down in two thousand and nineteen, and I came back, and the father that I am today for my children is something that would have never been anywhere on the radar, something I could have ever dreamed of being. The person that I can be back to the community, the person that I can give back, the example that I can be to them, even more importantly, is something that I could, that I owe everything to Ibogaine. I owe it to that one thing. There's not too many things I can say in life that I owe everything to, but I owe it to the experience that Ibogaine and what it gave me back in my life.
Any other questions?
I just want to say, Dakota, thank you so very much, obviously, first, for serving the country, and then, second, for coming here today and sharing your personal firsthand account of how, you know, this substance has helped you in your healing. So again, thank you so very much.
No, thank you all so much. Thank you.
Thank you. At this time, we'll call Mr. Jerry Catlett, who is the parent of an Ibogaine patient. He is also the founder of Investment and Financial Strategies in Salt River Bed and Barn LLC in Mercer County, Kentucky. Mr. Catlett.
Well, I want to thank you all today for...
Lean into that microphone, sir. You're very soft-spoken, and we will make sure we get your words.
Thank you. I apologize to everyone because I'm having to follow two great individuals in their talks, and I'm sorry. I got emotional just listening to that. I got a few, I got a few phone calls a few weeks ago, asking me if I'd speak today, and I'm normally a yes person, and I agreed to it immediately, and hung up the phone. It was pretty short and sweet, and I thought to myself, oh, Lord, what did I get myself into? I thought, you know, I'm not a psychologist, I'm not a psychiatrist, I'm not a medical doctor, I don't work in addiction field, I don't in medical research, and I'm definitely not a public speaker. So, and I apologize for my delivery and coming emotional about this subject. Anyway, I think it may help everyone to understand what we've gone through with my recovering addict son, if I go backwards.
I'm sorry to interrupt you. Bring in on that microphone just a little bit so we can hear you.
And anyway, I'm a lifelong resident of central Kentucky, grew up on a farm, went to University of Kentucky to get our milk and cows, met a beautiful farm girl, got married, went back to the farm, milk and cows, for a few years. Lived off my wife's big teacher's income of about sixty-seven hundred at that time, and it didn't take me long to realize that was not the career I wanted. I got out, got into real estate, selling real estate back in that day, it's a lot like today. Inflation was going a little crazy, interest, people were wanting to buy land for conservative and investment, and that went really well for a couple of years until interest rates went to eighteen percent. That got me into the insurance business, and that's where I've been for the last forty years, along with financial services. And I mention that is because getting started with a young family, farm background, teacher income, struggling insurance agent that hated cold calling, we didn't have a lot of money. We were our average Joe family. Tried to do the right thing, tried to raise our kids, do the right from wrong. Anyway, we had three kids, and two were easy to raise, one wasn't. He enjoyed partying, he enjoyed doing the things many kids want to do. We eventually got him out of high school, he tried a couple of colleges, and at about thirty, he decided he wanted to check himself into another rehab, and he wanted to go to Florida. He thought it'd be better getting out of state, so we somewhere, we found the money, and he went down there, checked himself in, was successful, halfway houses. Then he and his friend that he met in rehab started a business, was doing well, and one night, he was sitting at a stoplight, and a person rear-ended him. His doctor told him, basically, you got pain in Florida, and how many pills do you want? And every time he went back, how many pills do you want? And so naturally, he became addicted. So eventually, the roommate calls and says, you need to come get your son, and he's staying strung out all the time, so we go down, bring him back home, get him somewhat straightened out, I guess. Then he tells us about a friend who went to Puerto Rico and went through Ibogaine treatment, came back, got her life in order, applied to law school, and is a productive attorney today. So he was soliciting us to find the money to send him to Puerto Rico. And, you know, back in those days, if you read, tried to research it, being myself and my background, the way I think, you think, well, that's another gimmick. There's no way in hell this route's going to help somebody with addiction. But my wife and I had already come to the conclusion our son was a dead man walking. We were prepared for any time for policemen show up our front door and say, he's no longer with us. So there wasn't a whole lot of options. We found the money, we put him on a plane, and honestly, I did not... And honestly, I did not think I'd see the boy back alive. That was about 10... About 10 years ago. The boy was successful. He tells me that within a few minutes of taking the treatment, he was no longer addicted to opioids. He stayed down there. He actually went to work for one of those clinics back in those days. He tells me that six months later, he did take another treatment. Today he's still opioid addict-free. Doesn't mean he doesn't have other problems. He went from there, working with clinics, to Mexico, to Colombia, to Peru, back to Mexico, look, working in different Ibogaine clinics, which a lot of times is a large house. It wasn't illegal in most of those countries. And encouraging people to come to those countries to get treatment. So that's what he's been doing. And he doesn't make a lot of money. He doesn't make any. My whole life has been about success is making money, good jobs. But I do think he's successful in helping people today. Of course, he spends most of his day on the phone trying to help people. And he told me this week, he loses about six people a year that he's trying to help. That's six people, this one individual now, that hasn't had a chance to use Ibogaine. The only reason I think this boy's above ground today is because of this Ibogaine treatment. So that's a parent's story. I don't know anything about research, I don't know anything about chemicals, I don't know anything. I know my son's above... Sorry, above ground today because of Ibogaine treatment. And I would wish that other people had that opportunity. You know, I think about how did, when thinking about what I was going to say today, because normally I would have been sat down after two minutes. I had pretty well forgotten about most of what our family went through. But there's a prayer that helps me, you know, simple little prayer. God grant me the serenity to accept the things I cannot change, the courage, change the things I can and the wisdom to know the difference. Well, God gave me the serenity to accept I had a drug addict. I had a son that's probably going to be dead shortly. My wife and I was expecting a policeman to show up and tell us he's no longer with us. He gave me the wisdom, the courage to find the money, to send him to something I did not think would work. But I was, I knew he was dead if he stayed here in the country. So we did. So I have the same prayer for you all today, that God grants you the courage, the wisdom to make these tough decisions. And I know it's going to be tough. You're going to have big pharma, you're going to have politicians, you're going to have certain other people just can't understand why you would spend this much money on something they've never heard of, probably their families have never experienced. So I hope that you can do it. The one last thing I guess is, you know, I keep hearing, what's the definition of insanity? Keep doing the same thing over and over and expecting a different result? This is not what we're doing with our opioid addiction. I mean, we have to do something different. And this is a viable option from my experience. Not that I'm a clinical researcher or know anything about drugs. Matter of fact, I was in the UK in the seventies and my wife and I never took, smoked marijuana. We never did anything. We thought it's against the law. One more other thing, thinking back with my son at 18, and we're on him about, at that point, using marijuana. And he says, well, I can walk out the front door and I can get a joint faster than I can get a six pack of beer. At 18, both of them are illegal. What's the difference? And that, I couldn't, it couldn't, I couldn't comprehend it. So that's a problem we have. We have so many problems on so many different levels with education, with understanding. And you all are out on the front foot of making changes and I pray that you can. And really sorry for being emotional. So, and I will take a few questions. I don't know what I can answer.
You have nothing to apologize, sir, and thank you for being here and having the courage to share your family's very visceral experience. Are there any questions for Mr. Catlett?
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Catlett, for being here. Thank you. This time, we will call Ms. Pari Azandi, who is a licensed marriage and family therapist. Ms. Azandi.
Good morning. Thank you so much to the members of the Kentucky Opiod Commission and the Veterans Mental Health Leadership Commission, who so kindly granted me the privilege of being here today in this beautiful state. The devastating impact of the opiate addiction on our nation is undeniable. But I firmly believe that there is a solution, a solution that still remains largely unknown to many, and it was a solution that changed my life. My name is Pari Azandi, and in just a few weeks, on October 9th, 2023, I will be celebrating a significant milestone, 10 years of freedom from my opiate addiction. Like countless others, I was introduced to opiate pills innocently and naively from a friend at the time. I had no clue about their immense addictive power when I started taking them. I never anticipated the descent into the dependency that awaited me. I vividly recall the first time I experienced withdrawal symptoms. I was sick and I was confused. I didn't know what was happening, so I reached out to my friend, only to be met with callous laughter and the revelation that I was in fact going through withdrawals. Little did I know that this was going to mark the beginning of years trapped in the clutches of addiction. Eventually, my addiction led me down a dark path of heroin use, causing me to abandon my work, my education, and my relationships. I became consumed by my addiction, losing sight of who I truly am. I blamed myself for being a bad person and a bad daughter. I thought to myself, why am I like this? I thought I was fortunate to have grown up in a relatively privileged environment. But my mother, who was burdened with the responsibility of being a single mother and providing for us, was surviving and she wasn't really able to be present with me. And in the first seven years of my life, we endured living with my father, who was an alcoholic and physically abusive. So my childhood was filled with constant uproot and no sense of stability. And it wasn't until my parents finally separated that my mom was able to thrive and our quality of our life improved. I say this to say that there was significant trauma in my childhood that contributed to my need to escape with substances. The absence of a trauma-informed framework led me to blame and punish myself for my problems for years. My mom exhausted nearly all of her life savings sending me to traditional rehabs. I went to rehab over 10 times, and every time I felt like a failure. I felt like a burden and that the world would be better off without me. I couldn't envision a future beyond my 27th birthday. And by God's grace, the ultimate miracle of my life, I found myself in Vancouver, Canada, visiting, of all people, my estranged father. And in Vancouver, I overdosed once again, but this time I was led to a doctor who would change the course of my life forever. She introduced me to a treatment that was legal in Canada at the time, yet illegal in the United States called Ibogaine. I had never heard of such a thing back in the States, and at first I really thought it was too good to be true. Today, I often describe my life as divided into two distinct chapters, pre-Ibogaine and post-Ibogaine. Through an intense 24-hour treatment, I emerged feeling reborn. Not only did I escape the clutches of the physical withdrawal symptoms and the cravings, but I also began to relive some of the traumas of my life and gained newfound perspectives. I saw myself as someone of immeasurable worth and a child of God. I experienced a profound sense of aliveness and connectedness that had eluded me until that moment. It was as if I were a newborn, witnessing the ocean for the first time, savoring the taste of fruit, marveling at the beauty of animals and infants with pure awe. I realized the immense beauty in front of me I had been numbing myself to all of those years. Even still, I refrain from labeling Ibogaine as a cure-all. With, as with any great moment of insight, integration is paramount. With the support of my family, I transformed my lifestyle. I severed ties with bad friends, I moved back into my mom's house, I got therapy, I started working, I went back to school, and I embraced an entirely different way of life. We must be willing to make lifestyle changes based on the insights gained during this fleeting window of opportunity that Ibogaine graciously provides us. This is why it's important to incorporate social services, support systems, and education to integrate the transformation that can occur within Ibogaine. My personal journey has led me to advocate for a more comprehensive and trauma-informed approach to addiction recovery. Today, I'm a licensed therapist in California where I focus on treating childhood trauma and addiction. We urgently need innovative approaches to addiction treatment such as Ibogaine. I hope that by sharing my story, I can bring a little bit of awareness and inspiration to change how we approach addiction treatment in this country. Thank you.
Thank you for being here. Thank you for having the courage to share in such a forthright and transparent way the life you have lived and the experiences that you have had. And last but not least, thank you for being so gracious with the way I butchered your beautiful name.
Oh, it's okay.
Are there any questions from any of the commission members for Ms. Azandi?
Yes, I have one, Brian. When did you say your sober date was again?
October 9th, 2013.
Mine is October 13th, 2013.
Wow.
So congratulations.
Thank you so much.
Can I ask you a question?
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Azandi, as a counselor, you talked about the services that you feel like should be administered concurrent with Ibogaine. Can you expound on that a little bit just for members of the commission?
Yeah, I just want, I think addiction is a very multifaceted problem, right? And Ibogaine can really get to the physical part as well as a spiritual part, but we have to look at the systems that are contributing to these problems, right? So it's not just a cure-all, really just considering lifestyle changes, community, having other people who have recovered from Ibogaine to sort of be a model and a mentor through this process is extremely beneficial. But I guess I just say that to highlight how it really is a systemic issue on multiple different levels.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions or remarks for Ms. Azandi? Thank you very much, ma'am. Thank you. At this time, we will call Mr. Bobby Loughlin, who is the CEO of New Courses, New Course Enterprises, and a former gymnast. Welcome, sir.
Thank you. Well, good morning. My name is Bobby Loughlin, and I'm deeply honored to be here with you all today. I want to first start by thanking the Opioid Abatement Advisory Commission, all the previous speakers, General Steele and Brett Waters, and everybody at the Veterans Mental Health Leadership Coalition. Your open-mindedness and willingness to chart a new course is the foundation for change. Kentuckians should be proud of their representatives as they take bold steps to open up access to Ibogaine treatment for those in need. Just a little bit about me, I grew up middle class, two loving parents, older brother, as an accomplished athlete, a high-achieving student. I had dreams, friends, ambitions, drive, passion, a willingness to work hard for things I wanted. And I mention these because these are the same characteristics that were possessed by so many who have fallen victim to what I consider one of the most brutal and cunning enemies the United States has ever faced, the opioid epidemic. I was first introduced to opiates by a doctor who prescribed them after a minor surgery in 2010. Within two years, the vicious grip of addiction squeezed everything positive out of my life and left me spiritually bankrupt on death's door as an intravenous heroin addict. I lost respect for myself. The trust of my family. The drive to pursue my dreams. And the ability to be a productive member of society. For years, I woke up with a firm resolution that today was the last day and now it was time to get and stay sober, but was repeatedly overpowered by my addiction. I had tried traditional inpatient and outpatient treatment centers, but was unable to achieve long-term sobriety. I was using against my own will. Seemingly trapped in a cycle that would invariably lead to jail or death. I stand before you today, or I sit before you today, as someone who over 10 years ago, on January 15th, 2013, received Ibogaine treatment under the care of medical professionals in response to this life-threatening addiction. I've been sober ever since. One of the key reasons for my survival was that I had knowledge of and access to Ibogaine treatment, albeit rather inconvenient access as I was required to leave the United States for treatment. The key, though, was access. I believe large-scale access to Ibogaine treatment for opiate addiction will be an integral part of what helps us win this battle. While Ibogaine is not a magic bullet, it did have four intrinsically unique effects on me, which make it particularly powerful specifically with respect to opiate addiction. Number one, it substantially minimized the physiological feeling of opiate withdrawal. Number two, it removed the mental compulsion to use opiates. Number three, it introduced a spiritual experience which reinstated com- Number three, it introduced a spiritual experience which reinstated compassion and love for myself. And number four, it is not habit-forming and only needs to be used once. Tough to monetize that. The confluence of these effects removed the friction to implement a new life. It provided a way out, which I took full advantage of. My journey of recovery did not stop after Ibogaine. I immediately integrated myself into a recovery community, which I feel is paramount to maintaining my sobriety. Today, I have a life that I'm proud of. I have a wonderful wife, two beautiful children, one on the way. Founded my own business, which has grown to create hundreds of jobs. I follow the rules. I pay my taxes. I have a healthy lifestyle, at least I try to have a healthy lifestyle. And I try to be available for people in my community to be of service. I feel I've shifted from a liability to an asset. I know there are hundreds of thousands who, like me, have the ability to reclaim their lives using Ibogaine as a tool for change. I'm hopeful that if people who have the desire to emerge victorious from their battle with addiction are provided access to Ibogaine, lives will be saved, wrongs will be righted, families will be united and started, and dreams will once again be pursued. Let's go forward knowing that while we do face a tough battle with opiate addiction and the epidemic, we can and will win so long as we keep an open mind, follow the evidence where it goes, and push forward boldly. Happy to answer questions if I can get through them.
Thank you, sir. Are there any questions or comments from commission members to Mr. Loughlin?
Mr. Loughlin, thank you very much. Again, I'll say to you, congratulations on 10 years of continuous sobriety. I know the fight has been difficult, and thank you for coming here today and sharing so openly about your story.
Thank you.
Mr. Loughlin, congratulations on how you have managed to overcome the most lethal conflict an individual can fight, and that is the fight for their own selves. Thank you for being here and sharing yourself with us today, and congratulations on becoming a new father times three. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Thank you.
This time, we'll now call Dr. Joseph Barzulia, who is a psychedelic medicine and integrative healthcare advisor and developer. Dr. Barzulia.
Good morning. I've provided you all with several research abstracts, and I'll be sharing some slides that you'll have pictures with so you don't have to turn your neck around.
Be sure and lean into that microphone and speak up, you are soft-spoken gentlemen.
You got it.
I have listened to too much loud music and shot firearms irresponsibly.
So my name is Dr. Joseph Barzulia. I want to express my gratitude to this commission for exploring Ibogaine to help end this ongoing pharmaceutical plague of death that continues to afflict our nation and has shown little to no signs of relenting in recent years. As a way of background, I'm speaking to you from multiple relevant professional and personal identities. I'm a clinical psychologist, and I've worked as an Ibogaine therapist, provider, researcher, and CEO of an Ibogaine clinic in Mexico. I continue to advise this clinic, where we've treated over 1,000 United States military veterans in the past six years. I've co-authored half a dozen peer-reviewed scientific papers on Ibogaine. In providing care, I've worked directly with approximately 800 individuals with Ibogaine and Iboga. I've also worked as a therapist in the Phase II clinical trials of MDMA-assisted therapy for post-traumatic stress disorder, being advanced by MAPS, who published their Phase III results yesterday in Nature. I have 17 years of experience in the mental health and addiction field, and have worked in inpatient detox facilities, rehab centers, and methadone clinics. I'm also an Ibogaine patient. I've taken Iboga and Ibogaine over 30 times in the past eight years to keep a case of chronic neurologic Lyme disease at bay. And Ibogaine is the reason I'm standing or sitting here with you today and not permanently I'm also speaking to you as an initiate and eight-year student of the Central African Bouite tradition, who hold Iboga as their sacrament. Lastly, I'm a former Christian pastor and theological seminary graduate, which for me, helps inform the most important and unique promise of Ibogaine, which has an instrument for spiritual reconnection. I first discovered Ibogaine shortly after becoming disheartened in my career choice as a psychologist. At the time, I was working with Vietnam veterans at a methadone clinic at the flagship Veterans Hospital in West Los Angeles. These veterans had remained dependent on methadone for 40 years, and they were clearly still numbing the pain of the distant past. I thought, is this really the best we have to offer our veterans? Shortly thereafter, in 2015, I witnessed an opioid detox with Ibogaine in Mexico, and I could not believe my eyes. To witness a patient with the most severe and chronic addiction you can imagine on death's doorstep undergo a 48-hour process and come out calm, connected, with a new radiance in their eyes, and really wanting to live, this is a miracle in the truest sense. And with Ibogaine, this is not a rare occurrence. This is the norm. I continue to advise several Ibogaine clinics in this clinic, where we've utilized two treatments in a sequential protocol over the past eight years: first Ibogaine, and several days after, another short-acting compound called 5-MEO DMT, which is in Phase II clinical trials for depression. I've published a book chapter about the specific two-drug protocol, which I've included the abstract for you in this packet. We began to see in 2016 that veterans coming in for alcohol and opioid addiction were also reporting remission of cognitive problems from chronic traumatic brain injury and post-traumatic stress, which speaks to the global healing potential of Ibogaine and is being testified to today by many veterans. From what I have repeatedly witnessed firsthand, I believe Ibogaine is a revolutionary and paradigm-changing treatment. However, it is by no means a cure-all or a panacea and does have risks. I'm going to share with you briefly why Ibogaine works, how risks are addressed, and a few considerations for advancing this initiative. And I apologize, I'm going to talk quick because I have a lot to share with you. While we're discussing Ibogaine as an addiction treatment, you need to know that Ibogaine is a higher-order medicine than any other known medical treatment for addiction. It is a sacred and ancestral plant medicine. Iboga has been used as a spiritual technology, likely since time immemorial in Equatorial Africa, by the Babongo Pygmy people. This is why Iboga is called bois sacré in French, or the sacred wood, by the Bouite and Gabon. From our published research, we had found Ibogaine is indeed sacred, as 2/3 of our patients report experiencing something sacred or spiritual during their Ibogaine experience. Ibogaine is a medical and psychological treatment, but it is unique, as it can address the spiritual dimension, which is necessary in order to truly heal the triad of the mind, body, and I'm going to highlight several high-level reasons why Ibogaine specifically works for opioid use disorder. Number one, Ibogaine rapidly alleviates opioid withdrawal and cravings and promotes lasting sobriety in a manner that is superior to opioid maintenance therapies. In the slide, you'll see a 2018 paper we co-authored with Dr. Ben Malcolm. We examined 50 of our chronic opioid-dependent patients. We found at 48 hours after a single Ibogaine dose, 78% of patients did not exhibit clinical signs of opioid withdrawal or cravings, which you can see visually. We only captured the first 48 hours, but these symptoms continued to decline with additional administrations of lower doses of Ibogaine. In a second paper we published in 2017 in the Journal of Psychedelic Studies with lead author Alan Davis, we surveyed 88 patients with chronic opioid use up to three years after treatment. 2/3 of these patients had tried Suboxone, and almost half had tried methadone. At the time of the survey, we found 41% of patients had achieved sustained remission of their opioid use, and 30% reported after Ibogaine, they never touched a single opioid drug again. You can align these findings with a higher statistic from a 2017 analysis by Brown and Alper, published in the American Journal of Drug and Alcohol Abuse, who found a 50% remission one month after a single Ibogaine treatment in 30 patients. These are remarkable findings, and arguably better than outcomes with methadone or Suboxone, which are roughly 8% to 18% efficacy after treatment, according to the NIH. I want to show you a slide, this comparison of Ibogaine and methadone. Next slide. Since over 50% of opioid use disorder patients are addicted to multiple substances, a treatment that only addresses opioid use is insufficient to treat this population. Numerous animal and human studies identify that Ibogaine simultaneously targets addiction and craving to multiple substances, including alcohol, methamphetamines, cocaine, and nicotine, not just opioid use disorder. So in advancing Ibogaine research, you all will be getting essentially a five-for-one return on your efforts. In contrast to methadone and Suboxone, Ibogaine is usually administered once or twice. It's fast-acting and has durable outcomes. The minimum time to break an opioid dependence with methadone is 12 months. With Ibogaine, it's 12 hours. Ibogaine is a natural medicine. It reduces anxiety, improves mood, does not require ongoing burden on the medical system, and has little potential for abuse. It's not a fun experience. We know that methadone and buprenorphine are commonly abused, are involved in many overdoses, and chronic use is documented to lead to brain atrophy, liver injury, cognitive deficits, blunted emotions, sexual dysfunction, and side effects like tooth decay from Suboxone films. A second reason why Ibogaine works is that it is a precision sniper for targeting the exact brain structures that are implicated in opioid use disorder. You actually could not design a better drug to treat substance addiction in the brain. Next slide. What you will see here is a SPECT scan. This is looking at cerebral blood flow. The top row is before treatment, the bottom row is five days after treatment. This shows blood flow in several regions in the brain relative to the rest of the brain. Blue is average, red is the top 15%, and white being the top 8% of blood flow. These images are from a marine we treated for alcohol use disorder, and these images were published in the Journal of Progress in Brain Research in 2018. This veteran also had the short-acting drug 5-methoxy DMT, which is a potential confound. However, this is five days after treatment, while nor Ibogaine, the active metabolite of Ibogaine, is still active. What you are seeing is a shift of significantly increased blood flow in the brain structures known as the caudate, putamen, occipital lobe, and cerebellum. These are some of the deepest structures in the brain that are most implicated in opioid use disorder and are associated with drug reward, memories, and habit formation. Maladaptive patterns in these brain structures hijack and overrides one's ability to stop using drugs, despite your frontal lobes telling you it's destroying your life. So Ibogaine may be addressing addiction from the bottom up in the brain, literally at the root. Next slide. Next slide. This is a second image from 2016 of a US Army veteran who we treated with Ibogaine and 5-MEO DMT for traumatic brain injury. You will see a similar pattern of increased blood flow in these deep brain structures. Ibogaine hits virtually all the neurotransmitters involved in most substance addiction and supports the brain in healing through peptides and growth factors like neurotensin and glial-derived neurotropic factor. This is why it is entirely unique as a regenerative therapy for addiction. A third reason why Ibogaine works is it induces dreamlike visions that increase insight into the causes of one's addiction, which can lead to durable psychological change. Some of the visionary content includes images of personal and ancestral biographies, cosmic landscapes, and encounters with deceased ancestors, spiritual deities, and even God. Perhaps not things you see every day. Patients who have visions on Ibogaine often attribute a high degree of personal relevance and healing intelligence to what they witnessed. From our personal research, we found up to three years after treatment, 2/3 of patients reported gaining insightful knowledge about themselves during Ibogaine, and afterward increased long-term states of inner peace, gratitude, appreciation for life, and a greater connection to self and others. Next slide. Ibogaine is and can be safely administered in clinical settings. This is an old picture of our Ibogaine clinic from 2015. Ibogaine treatment requires rigorous medical, cardiac, and psychiatric screening and monitoring. There are established consensus medical guidelines for Ibogaine treatment that were specified by the Global Ibogaine Therapy Alliance in 2015, and they can be found publicly at iboganguidelines.com. Ibogaine is safely administered in an inpatient setting with a team, including emergency-trained medical staff, mental health professionals, typically in a ratio of 2:1 or 1:1 staff to patient. All patients receive continuous cardiac monitoring up to 24 hours, are given IV fluids, electrolytes, and anti-arrhythmic agents like magnesium sulfate and other antioxidants, which greatly reduces risk. In advancing Ibogaine research in Kentucky here, it will be critically important for you all to hear from doctors who have decades of real-world experience. These physicians are predominantly operating in Mexico, Brazil, and Spain. It will also be critical for you to include the voices of indigenous elders who possess the traditional knowledge about this medicine. This falls in line with a UN framework called the Nagoya Protocol, which applies to pharmaceutical molecules with clear indigenous history, and ensures the inclusion of traditional knowledge and ongoing economic benefit sharing and reciprocity with those who have stewarded this medicine for millennia. In terms of current usage, you must know that virtually all Ibogaine clinics have transferred use from Ibogaine, drawn from Iboga plants, and instead use another plant called Voocanga africana, which grows much faster than Iboga, and so aids the sustainability of the traditional Gabonese resource. However, using Voocanga does not respond to the lack of reciprocity to the Gabonese, who hold the foundational knowledge of the use of Ibogaine. In conclusion, I believe funding Ibogaine research for opioid use disorder is perhaps one of the most obvious and necessary decisions that can be made in the history of addiction medicine. So I invite you and any other decision-makers to choose wisely. If you are successful in advancing Ibogaine research, I have no doubt that you will be on the right side of history of medicine and attempts to alleviate human suffering. I'm open to questions.
Are there questions from commission members for Dr. Barzulia?
I think I do have a question.
Yes.
You mentioned that it can also address depression. I've struggled with that for almost 50 years.
God bless you.
You got my attention. Thank you. I don't think it's a question.
You're welcome. Ibogaine has been used for many years, even the last century in France as an antidepressant, called Lambarine.
Any other questions for Dr. Barzulia? Doctor, thank you very much for your presence and your time. We're running a little ahead of the schedule. We want to keep it that way. We have arrived at what is supposed to be a 10-minute break at 10:30. It is currently 10:20. We'll go ahead and take it now, and we will reconvene at 10:30, so that hopefully if we have people who want additional public comments, we can work them in at the end. Thank you. Be back at 10:30. Tommy Acido.
Sink into this.
Be sure and speak up real good into that microphone.
Good morning, everyone. First, I wish to express my gratitude towards Attorney General Cameron and Mr. Hubbard for their unwavering commitment and bold initiatives to heal Kentucky. The strides Kentucky is making aren't possible without leaders who are ready to champion the cause. Moreover, a special Moreover, a special note of gratitude to General Steele and the entire Veteran Mental Health Leadership Coalition. Your tireless efforts and advocacy for our veterans is nothing short of extraordinary. I am beyond honored to be a part of the coalition. I stand before you today not as a former Navy SEAL, but as a representative of many brave men and women who have experienced the highs and lows that come with service to our great nation. I was a combat medic for sixteen years, playing multiple roles as a lead explosive breacher and an intelligence officer. I've witnessed the sunrises in Iraq, the terrains of Afghanistan, the wilderness of Africa, and the buzzing streets of Southeast Asia. These experiences, for better or for worse, have shaped who I am today. While my physical training was rigorous, nothing prepares you for the emotional toll that military service in combat can take. The never-ending cycles of deployments, witnessing the loss of comrades, small children, are the horrors of war. I struggled feeling like a cog in a larger machine. Looking back, I often wonder if it was all worth it, and it was, because it got me to It is said that soldiers are government property, but we are humans first. We feel, we hurt, we grieve, and most importantly, we yearn for understanding and wonder if we can ever adjust back to society. How do you undo what you've seen? To cope with the pain of war, I, like many others, sought solace in substances. My intention was to numb or suppress any emotion that might cause me to fail. I was forged by the fear of failure. I did what I had to do to answer the call. The highs of achievements on the battlefield set unnatural dopamine levels, which made every day without a win feel like a loss. I was addicted to winning, but paralyzed by fear. I vividly remember the evening in 2011 while at a medical refresher course in Fort Bragg. The weight of my choices to self-medicate came crashing down. To think that a cocktail of stress pills and alcohol could have been the end of my story is a sobering thought. It was a wake-up call, but old habits die hard. Each deployment that followed was accompanied by darker shadow of addictions and mental anguish. In 2016, I attended the National Intrepid Center of Excellence, or the NICO, at Walter Reed Medical Center, under the care of Bob Kaufman, Dr. Bob Kaufman. And after a hundred and twenty-four medical appointments, seven MRIs, and many tests, I received a diagnosis of PTSD and TBI. The SSRIs I was given only added to a deeper feeling of numbness, and my variant identity tied to my trident was slipping away and with it, my will to continue to live. But every night has its dawn, and for me, that dawn was in the form and promise of a new treatment called Ibogaine. Though daunting at first, proved to be a lifesaver I so desperately needed, it wasn't just a medicinal treatment. It was a deep dive into my subconscious, self-forgiveness, and most importantly, self-love. Today, I'm on a new journey, one that celebrates the power of healing trauma, coaching others to break free of addictions, and creating powerful music and stories. I found true love, the love for my bride, MJ, and for myself. And together, we have a clear vision of creating a state-of-the-art healing center that focuses on equine therapy, holotropic meditation, and art therapy. I'm committed to sharing with others not only the potential of life-saving medicines like Ibogaine, but the tools to rebuild the mind and the body after the reset. Two weeks ago, I received a call from Dr. Martine Polanco at The Mission Within. He asked me if I would be willing to help run two clinics in Mexico, and I quickly said yes to the man who helped save my life five years ago. Dr. Polanco will go down as the doctor to heal the SEALs. Once again, I witnessed ten veterans who all had dramatic healing experiences. The patients, they walk in broken, frail, and hanging on by a thread. You can see the hopelessness in their dull, empty eyes. One of the SEALs, a former student of mine, came through. His name was Jeff Reed, who had been suffering from debilitating cluster headaches for the past eight years as a result of firing rockets. He said it felt like someone was stabbing him in the back of his eyeballs with an ice pick. Jeff was prescribed opioids and became hooked on them, but the pain was too much even for the strongest opioids. Jeff told his wife a few months ago that he was going to take his life. He felt too much of a burden on his family. Fortunately, Jeff decided to take all their savings and come down to The Mission Within. After Jeff's Ibogaine treatment, I had the pleasure to talk to him, and he reported that his headaches were gone. Not better, gone. And so was his addictions to opioids. Kentucky stands as a leader in this pivotal moment in time, a moment when the whole world is watching, waiting for a champion to take action. Ibogaine should be made accessible, affordable, and it is safe to all that need this life-saving medicine. The citizens of the Bluegrass State deserve nothing less. Under the visionary leadership of Attorney General Daniel Cameron and Mr. Brian Hubbard, Kentucky is poised to be a beacon of hope in this endeavor. Let's champion this cause, for in healing our suffering, we strengthen our community and our nation. Let's march together. Thank you.
Are there any questions or comments from commission members for Mr. Asedo?
Mr. Asedo, first, thank you for serving this country, and also thank you for the work you're doing to help people find healing and transformation, and thank you for coming here today and sharing with us your expertise and experience and insights.
It's a pleasure. Thank you for having me.
Thank you, sir. This time, we'd like to call Mr. Ryan Roberts, who's an operations consultant, United States Marine Corps veteran, and is with The Mission Within.
Ladies and gentlemen of the Kentucky Opioid Abatement Advisory Commission, my name is Ryan Roberts, and I'm here before you today as a husband, a father, a Marine Corps combat veteran, and an advocate for a life-saving therapy that has not only transformed my life, but has the potential to transform countless others. I grew up on the East Coast, inspired to join the Marine Corps after the tragic events of 9/11. I put college on hold to join the Marine Corps Infantry, where I was attached to First Battalion, Second Marines in Camp Lejeune, North Carolina. Shortly after, I found myself in the bloodiest battle of the Iraq invasion, the Battle of Anazaria. During that battle, I lost eighteen of my brothers in an instant to a catastrophic friendly fire incident and several others throughout combat that day. I faced countless traumatic events, from taking lives to retrieving my fellow Marines' bodies. But the moment that broke me was when I held a young boy in my arms, applying first aid only to have him pass away. I wept uncontrollably, not knowing that would be the last time I experienced any emotion for the next twenty years. My next deployment to the Al-Anbar Province wasn't any easier. By the time we returned home, our battalion had lost more than twenty Marines, three of whom were my close teammates who lost their lives on our last patrol in country. In January of 2006, I left the Marine Corps and I returned home, only to witness my brothers losing their lives to suicide. Keven Horn of Inez, Kentucky, took his life with opiates just a few short months after leaving the service. His family's struggles with addiction opened my eyes to the devastating effects that opiates had on this region. When I returned home, I buried my past by compartmentalizing my trauma. I kept it together by staying busy, pursuing a career in healthcare, and climbing the professional ladder. But in 2019, it all began to fall apart. My depression, anxiety, alcohol abuse, and symptoms from countless brain injuries were eating me alive. Suicidal ideation was a constant, and my marriage and home life were quickly falling It was at the Marcus Institute for Brain Health that I met my guardian angel, Dr. Andrea Lucci. She introduced me to non-Western approaches to healing that included meditation, breathwork, Native American sweat lodges, and sensory deprivation float tank therapy. Then she connected me with Dr. Martine Polanco, founder of The Mission Within, and I found myself several weeks later in Mexico, participating in a clinical Ibogaine-assisted therapy program. Ladies and gentlemen, that treatment transformed my life. Now, here I sit in Keven's home state advocating for life-saving therapy, a therapy that may have saved his life, but definitely saved mine. I trust in God's divine plan and know that I'm here today to tell you how these medicines associated therapies saved my marriage, my relationship, with my children, and ultimately my life. Ibogaine-assisted therapy was my Hail Mary pass. As an executive in academic medicine, I did my homework on Ibogaine and the organization The Mission Within. I was blown away by the research and anecdotal reports that I was seeing. How could something so transformational be out of the reach for populations with such tremendous unmet needs? I was reassured by the safety and interventional protocols they had, that included screening, monitoring, and the presence of a licensed cardiologist, nurse, and therapist throughout the experience. What did the Ibogaine experience do for me? It provided a full reset. I liken the experience to having a complete reboot of my operating system. I went from having three to four migraines a month to being without any for over two years. The brain fog, the mental fatigue were nearly undetectable. The experience itself was long and extremely challenging, but it allowed me to excavate deeply-seated somatic trauma and reframe my perspective on them. Trauma became a catalyst for growth rather than a barrier to love and happiness. I now view pain and suffering as a divine gift, and I approach each day with intention, gratitude, and love. My connection with my wife, my children, and my community are deep and wide. The experience was so profound that I pivoted from a career as a healthcare executive to serving the veteran space as a business and clinical operations consultant. I now design and implement veteran psychedelic-assisted therapy care models and clinical pathways, and I'm involved in advocacy with the goal of educating and informing struggling veterans and their families. My goal is not to get veterans to psychedelic medicine. I aim to ensure that they know it's an option with both risk and reward. This movement doesn't need evangelists. It needs conscious people leading a life of love and service that's deeply rooted in community. Ladies and gentlemen, I stand before you today to ask the commission to explore Ibogaine-assisted therapy as a potential treatment option for opioid use disorder. I urge you to allocate funds to further clinical research efforts to explore the risks and benefits of this transformational medicine. The concern around cardiac risk shouldn't be a topic that we shy away from. Those deeply involved in these efforts devote tremendous resources to exploring this phenomenon and determining safe and effective dosages and treatment models. After a fourteen-year career in Western medicine, I know that no intervention is without risk. It's our job to understand which populations could benefit from this therapy and create safe and equitable access to it. We know that the existing treatment options have abysmal success rates. Ibogaine doesn't need to replace the current options, but should be used to bolster those efforts and provide another option. Providing Kentuckians with options will save lives. As Einstein said, "The definition of insanity is doing the same thing over and over again and expecting different results." Lastly, this medicine goes beyond healing the physical body. Time and again, I meet with veterans who want to share their story. Nearly every story concludes with them healing from traumatic events, reconnecting with themselves, their families, their community, finding purpose, and reconnecting with religious or spiritual aspects that fractured during combat. Ibogaine-assisted therapy shows the potential to heal the whole person. As a self-labeled system-level thinker, I'm rarely satisfied with addressing symptoms. But I do believe that addiction is a symptom, but in this case, we need to stop the bleeding before turning our sights towards the underlying unmet needs. My vision for the future of Ibogaine-assisted therapy in Kentucky and beyond is one where this powerful tool is available to those who need it most and where it's used responsibly to heal not just the body, but also the soul. Through both my professional and advocacy work, I'm committed to transforming the therapeutic landscape, ensuring that those in need receive the comprehensive, carefully curated psychedelic-assisted therapy they need and deserve. I leave you with this final appeal. Let us not be bound by the limitations of the past. Let us embrace the potential of Ibogaine-assisted therapy to heal, promote growth, and save lives. Let's act with courage, compassion, and conviction to make a real difference in the lives of those struggling with addiction.
Are there any questions or comments from commission members for Mr. Roberts? Thank you very much for your time and testimony, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Hubbard.
This time, we'll call Dr. Peter Hendricks, who I believe is a professor of psychiatry with behavioral neurobiology at the University of Alabama in Birmingham.
Thank you, Brian. I will try my best to project here. Let me tell you a little bit about my background so we can contextualize my interest in this novel approach. My introduction to addiction began in 1998, when I worked at a homeless shelter in San Francisco and witnessed firsthand the destructive effects of addiction. After that time, I decided to pursue a doctorate in clinical psychology and focused exclusively on substance use disorders. After my time as a graduate student at the University of South Florida in Tampa, I was an intern at the Durham VA Medical Center, where I continued to work with substance use disorders and veterans. After that time, I completed a postdoctoral fellowship at the University of California, San Francisco, where I continued to focus on substance use disorders and developing novel and potentially more effective treatments for these disorders. And I can tell you that over that time, I became very frustrated, if not demoralized, at the very poor outcomes associated with the very best treatments that money could buy. And this ranges from smoking cessation to alcohol use disorders to opioid use disorders. The treatments that we have, though they are the result of decades of very hard work and very well-intentioned, people are not very effective. Addiction is a chronic, relapsing disorder, and relapse is the norm. After I completed my postdoctoral fellowship, I took a position at the University of Alabama at Birmingham, and that's where I am now. I'm a professor there, and most of what I do revolves around exploring novel and hopefully more effective interventions for addiction. As I mentioned, I'm also a clinician. In 2014 or so, I began to notice the science, the literature. Psilocybin, which is a psychedelic that you might think of as in the same family in some ways as Ibogaine. And at that point, I thought, well, this might very well bring an end to my career, but I'm a little tired of exploring options that just don't seem to work. And some of the people in my position are required to seek funding for the work that they do, and at the time, this work was not fundable. And again, I thought this might be the end of things for me. But we have a very short amount of time on this planet to do good, and I thought, as Mr. Meyer mentioned before, it's my duty to leave no stone unturned, and we're going to take a good look at this. Now, the landscape has changed quite a bit. You're probably aware now that compounds like MDMA and psilocybin are in the front line, are the headlines of our newspapers and gaining much attention, and we're all very optimistic about this. But one question might be why we're not doing more with Ibogaine. And I think, as best I can tell, there are a few ways of looking at this. I think, one, we have politicized drug use, in part due to the cultural tumult of the late '60s and early '70s. I speak as though I was there. I wasn't. I was born in 1976, but as I understand, that was a very tumultuous time, and many drugs ended up... and many drugs ended up in Schedule I, given their association with the counterculture at that time, and Ibogaine is one of them. I think also, as many people noted, Ibogaine is a very powerful compound. It's a very, very powerful medicine and does not come without risks. Of course, everything comes with risks, everything we ever do. And as noted before, it would appear that when Ibogaine is administered in very carefully controlled settings with medical oversight, many of these risks can be mitigated nicely. I think the third issue likely resolves around profit motive. And as noted previously, if Ibogaine requires only one or two administrations, there, there may not be an incentive on the part of the pharmaceutical industry to pursue this further, though I'd argue that the cost-benefit ratio, especially the benefit to society, is immense. So, so where do I find myself now in the work that I do? I mentioned to Brian earlier, by the way, this is my first time in the state of Kentucky, and I hope you'll forgive me for that. I'm, I'm a native of Virginia, and I went to the University of Virginia, so I wasn't far away. And I, my, my grandparents are from Asheville, North Carolina. I now live in Birmingham, Alabama, which is considered to be part of Appalachia. So I can at least say that the dialect is very familiar to me, and I feel at home. In, in Birmingham, we too are in the midst of an opioid crisis, as is Kentucky. We're losing nearly 100,000 Americans every year to the opioid crisis. And what is rather unprecedented now is we, we are seeing children and adolescents dying from opioid overdoses, in part because fentanyl is finding its way into the drug supply, including into illicit substances that are not sold as opioids. So people who intend on using, say cocaine or methamphetamine, or even MDMA, might find themselves overdosing on fentanyl. So it's a very scary time. I'm, I'm the parent of four children, and I find myself often very worried about the future, considering how ubiquitous opioids have become and how deadly they are. And the treatments that are available now, as I mentioned before, are not very effective. We do have buprenorphine, we do have methadone. If people are adherent on these medications for a lifetime, they are effective. But as noted before, there are notable side effects associated with these maintenance medications. And it should come as no surprise that people don't want to be maintained on buprenorphine for their entire lives. They'd like to be clean altogether. So I think this is where Ibogaine enters the picture. We have the potential to advance a novel treatment that has been understudied and overlooked for the reasons I mentioned before. And I, I think there is the potential to save lives, especially in a region of, of the world that's been disproportionately affected by the opioid crisis. And I, I, I'm happy to, to take any questions that, at this point, especially if there are any questions around the science. But I, I do think with regard to science, it's, it's very exciting to think that we could begin to learn more about Ibogaine because it's a, a sort of wonderfully complex molecule that's, that is involved in a sort of symphony of polypharmacology. But as you, as you heard from the experiences that people reported today, that it appears to have immense therapeutic potential.
Thank you very much, Dr. Hendricks, for coming here and sharing your expertise and perspective. Are there any questions or comments from any of the commission members?
I have a comment. Thank you for speaking truth, especially about the political aspect and the profit. I've been thinking this for a long time, as are probably most people in this room. That, to me, will be the biggest challenge.
I, I agree. I do think that there are some political hurdles, in part because, look, we're, we're all human. We all think in emotional ways, and I'm, I'm no exception to that. And I have to admit, I, I would, I would probably describe myself as a rather conservative person in many ways. As I mentioned, I have four children, and, you know, you'll find me in the church every Sunday. I, I don't have a history of, of drug use myself. I don't think I've ever put a cigarette to my lips. I'm pretty boring in that regard. But, but I, I, I think I so badly would like to see my field really commit itself to trying to save lives and change lives. And I, I don't, I don't really know how to address this political issue other than to try to acknowledge with empathy that we're all the product of our environment. And, and there, there has been 50 years of what you might call misinformation or propaganda around drug use, and that we do have a tendency to moralize drug use, to think of drug use as, as, as bad or good. And I think it's, it's better that we just think about those who are dealing with addiction as really struggling, and they're looking to us to help them as best we can. And we've heard from a number of veterans here, and I, I'm, I have an especially soft spot in my heart for veterans, in, in part because my grandfather, with whom I was very close, was a World War II veteran. He lived to be 95. His brother was in a Nazi POW camp for two years and died quite young of cardiovascular disease. My grandfather convinced that it was due to his, his stressful experience. My, my brother's an active-duty Marine, more conservative than myself, but also on my side, I would think, when it comes to the development of these, these compounds. I think it's better that we think of this not as a, a, a political issue, but a way that we can, we can give back to all Americans who are struggling, but especially our veterans who have put their lives on the line for us.
Any other questions or comments from any commission members? With your permission, Dr. Hendricks, I may have to employ the phrase "symphony of polypharmacology." Phrase beautifully crafted and turned. Thank you for that contribution to today's vocabulary.
You're welcome. Thank you.
It is with regret that one of our scheduled witnesses is not able to attend today. It was going to be a great honor to introduce this room and the Commonwealth of Kentucky to one of the founders of the harm reduction movement that has very much taken hold here in the state within the past decade and the personification of Dr. Andrew Tatarsky, who is the founder and executive director at the Center for Optimal Living in New York. Dr. Tatarsky unfortunately came down with an illness which prevented him from traveling. And while I cannot replicate his stature or his contribution to the tremendous progress that has been made within the universe of substance dependence, I do have the great privilege of reading his words as previously prepared and sent to me last night into the record, and so I will begin to do so now. Ladies and gentlemen of the Kentucky Opioid Abatement Advisory Commission, my name is Andrew Tatarsky. I am an addiction psychologist with over 40 years, working on the front lines treating patients who suffer from addiction to opioids and other drugs. I have worked as a counselor, psychotherapist, program director, teacher, and author. I have developed a new approach to treating addiction called Integrative Harm Reduction Psychotherapy, known by the acronym of IHRP, that I've described in my book, Harm Reduction Psychotherapy: A New Treatment for Drug and Alcohol Problems. And I have trained individuals and organizations in 20 countries in this approach. I am a longtime member of the Clinical and Medical Advisory Panels to the New York State Office of Addiction Services and Support, and a founder and longtime member of the Executive Board of the Division on Addiction of New York State's Psychological Association. Since early in my career, I have been concerned about the limited effectiveness of our mainstream approaches to addiction treatment to help the overwhelming majority of people who struggle with drug addiction. The evidence is clear. Most people who need specialty addiction treatment don't go. More than half who go don't complete it, and most who complete treatment don't maintain their gains within weeks or months following treatment. One consequence of this is that over the last 20 years, we have lost over 1 million of our sons, daughters, mothers, fathers, neighbors, and friends to lethal drug overdose, more and more every year but one, with the most in 2022, when we lost nearly 110,000 people. I believe that this is largely due to the fact that our generally accepted understanding of addiction is limited, and most available treatments don't address the full complexity of addiction with its catastrophic consequences for individuals, their families, and our communities. Most addiction treatment is based on a primarily medical view of addiction. There are two main approaches to treatment that are based on this view. One in which opioid-dependent people are medically detoxified from the drug, taught about the disease of addiction, encouraged to maintain abstinence and taught skills for doing so. In the second approach, opioid-dependent people are maintained on a substitute opioid medication that stabilizes their neurochemical systems. Both of these approaches are effective and lifesaving for many people. However, the data I cited above suggests that these treatments are not appealing or helpful to the overwhelming majority of addicted people. I believe this is because they don't address the complex psychological, emotional, and spiritual dimensions of addiction that are often, if not usually, consequences of trauma. You have heard and will hear more stories from veterans about the relationship between war trauma and addictions. In addition to war trauma, research suggests that people who have experienced severe adverse childhood experiences and those suffering from post-traumatic stress disorder and other major traumatic experiences are at much higher risk of becoming addicted to drugs. Many trauma survivors discover that opioids work to manage or medicate the many terrible symptoms and consequences of trauma, including crippling anxiety, panic, profound shame and guilt, feeling dead or disconnected, loneliness, social isolation, depression, and suicidal thoughts. Medication treatment and abstinence-based treatments that ask people to give up their drugs before the trauma is addressed can be terribly threatening and therefore unacceptable to people who have come to rely on drugs to cope with the symptoms of unresolved trauma. Ibogaine addresses this need and should be added to our toolkit as soon as possible. When given in the optimal context of therapeutic preparation and aftercare, peer-reviewed studies demonstrate that Ibogaine can heal trauma, promote insight into the emotional and psychological forces driving addiction, facilitate spiritual rebirth experiences, and rapidly detox people from opioids and other drugs of misuse, leaving people craving free and feeling reset. People in need, like those whose personal testimony you've heard, should not have to go abroad to get this treatment or not have access to it when it could save their lives. Aside from the literature, the anecdotal evidence is overwhelming. I became aware of Ibogaine in 1995 when I met Howard Lotzoff. Howard was a heroin addict who discovered Ibogaine's value by taking it to get high and waking from it the next day craving free, inadvertently curing his addiction to heroin and other drugs. Since then, I have met many, many others who have had lifesaving transformative healing experiences with Ibogaine. The addiction treatment approach that I have developed is designed to extend the reach of traditional treatment to the large majority of problematic drug users who have not been helped by mainstream addiction treatments. Harm reduction treatment is best suited to contain and support Ibogaine treatment. The essence of this approach is that it doesn't begin with the requirement to commit to abstaining from drugs or presume what ultimate goals and recovery pathway best suits a given individual. This opens to the door to treatment wherever people are ready to begin making positive changes. This approach begins with establishing supportive treatment relationships with addicted people wherever they are in their motivation to change, and thus opens the door to the majority of people who are unclear about what treatment pathway to take. We are then able to work collaboratively with the patient to evaluate and assess their needs and refer them to the treatment that best meets their need or that they are motivated to pursue, whether Ibogaine, other medications for opioid use disorder, or detox in a drug-free environment. A strong therapeutic alliance and being motivated for the treatment are two of the most important ingredients in treatment success. In summary, the need for more effective tools to add to our opioid addiction toolkit is urgent. The recognition that addiction is not just a medical illness, but is also fueled by trauma, requires treatments that can address the trauma. There is much peer-reviewed and anecdotal evidence that Ibogaine, when embedded in high-quality harm reduction treatment, can address the biological, psychological, and spiritual dimensions of addiction, help to restore addicted people to a healthy level of functioning, and give them a powerful jumpstart into addiction recovery. I strongly urge you to make Kentucky the trailblazing state in the nation to support research to demonstrate the efficacy of Ibogaine to treat opioid use disorder. This research will make Ibogaine available to Kentucky residents in the research context and ultimately help make this lifesaving medication available to the rest of our nation. I urge you to support the Kentucky Ibogaine Project. I'd like to end my testimony and bring it to life by sharing David's story. David is a current patient of mine who had a powerful, positive, transformative Ibogaine treatment five months ago. These are David's words, which is called "Begins With A Simple Gear Shift." My name is David Cox. I'm a 56-year-old male. In March of this year, after a 40-year complicated relationship with cocaine that once again brought the darkest of days, I turned to Ibogaine to hopefully return to normal. So Ibogaine didn't just show me the unseen truth about cocaine. It drove into the core of the issues, showing me that all my trauma was self-inflicted, to then find compassion and forgiveness, which allowed me to comfortably sit in my skin for the first time in my life. I have now become that better friend, stronger worker, and happy member of the community. I do believe that Ibogaine and proper pre- and post-counseling are an unexplainable magic combination that will have the same ripple effects across your state, this country, and I have no doubt that we will see a bigger change in this world. I'll do my best to explain a bit why. The medicine then showed me how I was living. It was a sad, lonely, and very hard-to-relive the experiences. I don't know if heaven or hell exists in death, but I saw the true hell on earth I was living in, lying to myself the whole time, thinking that cocaine was pleasure and I wasn't hurting my body and soul. I couldn't ever see that now, very clear truth. Then, at the end of my Ibogaine journey, I saw the beauty that this life is meant to be, even in struggles always allowing for grace with emotional regulation. The next and more important part of my experience was the critical period after the Ibogaine journey, when a person is most able to learn and grow. And that is why aftercare is so very important. It is a wonderful life, David. These conclude the remarks of Dr. Andrew Tatarsky. Sir, we regret your absence, and we thank you very much for your perspective today. At this time, we'd like to call Mr. Marcus and Mrs. Amber Capone. They are co-founders of Vets Exploring Treatment Solutions, and Marcus is a former United States Navy SEAL. We're honored for you to be here, and thank you.
Thank you for having us.
Ibogaine saved my life. It saved my marriage, and it kept our family together, and it will heal generations to come. And I know you've heard that today, and you'll continue to hear that for the rest of today. Thank you for the Kentucky Opioid Abatement Commission for allowing me to speak here today. I'm always humbled, and I'm truly grateful to have the opportunity. My name's Marcus Capone. I am a retired Navy SEAL, as Mr. Hubbard alluded to, serving multiple tours in both Afghanistan and Iraq. I was deployed part of a highly-trained special mission unit, and I was involved in hundreds of direct action operations as a lead explosives expert. I am also the founder of Vets: Veterans Exploring Treatment Solutions, a 501(c)(3) organization providing life-saving support to other special operations veterans who are facing a number of challenges following 20 years of sustained combat. And lastly, I'm also the founder and CEO of a public benefit corporation, one of the first companies who will figure out how to make these treatments available through subsidies like insurance, because we know as these medicines go through FDA approval, we are going to have to figure out a way to pay for them so we aren't leaving anyone behind. Upon my retirement from naval special warfare, I found myself facing a host of mental health challenges that became growingly complex. After trying a number of traditional approaches to medicine for over seven years straight, including multiple antidepressants, mood stabilizers, and talk therapy, I took a leap of faith, like many that you've heard from today, to travel outside the U.S., outside our borders, for Ibogaine therapy. That was in 2017. And in a short period of time, I felt immediate life-saving relief and a searing conviction to pay this opportunity forward to other veterans returning home from service. In doing so, my wife and I founded Vets. In years since, Vets has provided funding for nearly 1,000 veterans to travel abroad for the same lifeline. And although I was not addicted to opioids, many of these individuals are seeking relief from years of opioid use due to injuries sustained on the battlefield. While it's impossible to share the volume and scope of these stories with you, here is just one from a grant recipient that went through our program. I'm a medically-retired Navy SEAL. I served two tours in Afghanistan, and on my second deployment, I was injured by a rocket-propelled grenade. Eventually, I was diagnosed with post-traumatic dis... excuse me, post-tra... the braces are getting me right now. Post-traumatic stress disorder and traumatic brain injury. The most challenging symptoms were migraines, insomnia, and memory loss. Ultimately, the Navy could not sustain my required care, and it could not work due to pain and opioid intoxication. Medical retirement folli... excuse me, followed shortly after. The pain associated with my injuries was debilitating, oftentimes requiring four to eight opioids per day to provide any semblance of relief. During that time, I barely left my house. I could not drive a vehicle. My condition rapidly deteriorated, only made worse by the loss of my profession and the Navy SEAL community. Approximately four years ago, I began hearing stories of friends and former teammates who were traveling outside the U.S. for Ibogaine treatment. It took me a couple of years to commit, but eventually I found myself seeking this treatment too. Ibogaine therapy saved my life and my family. Since the treatment, I am off all pharmaceuticals... excuse me, pharmaceuticals, including opioids. I sleep without medication, and I do not need to use my nerve stimulator, which I used to run 24 hours a day, seven days a week. There's no more powerful tool for the treatment of a number of the most challenging conditions so many of us are facing, including opioid dependence, and again, you've heard this several times today. Again, that was from a grant recipient who went through our program at Vets and who also happens to be a very close friend and a former Navy SEAL. In conclusion, my former training taught me to think unconventionally, and we have seen the life-saving benefit of doing so in fighting this new battle. I applaud the state of Kentucky and Attorney General Daniel Cameron for this bold and unconventional show of leadership and resolve in fighting the opioid epidemic for all Kentuckians. It is our hope and our prayer that the citizens of this state will receive the same relief and healing that so many of my fellow teammates and veterans have to date. Ibogaine has incredible potential in resolving addictions, addressing trauma, and impacting generations to come by doing so. We stand by you every step of the way. Kentucky can set the precedence to not only heal the individuals who need help in this state, but you can lay the groundwork for other states to follow.
Hello, my name is Amber Capone. I'm the co-founder and CEO of Vets. I've been married to Marcus for 23 years. We've been together for 26. I'd like to tell you a bit about why I'm here today, because Kentucky is a very special place to me. I grew up 45 minutes from the Kentucky border and a tiny hometown called Cardville, Illinois. I get emotional because where I'm from is why I'm here, and I'll tell you a bit about that. I was raised on a retired dairy farm. I've only been to Chicago once in my life, but I can't count the number of times that I've crossed the Kentucky border to Paducah, Showbiz Pizza, Patty's Pecan Pie, shopping trips to Kentucky Oaks Mall, flights out of Louisville, and driving through the Dogwoods in springtime. I'm the proud descendant of farmers, excavators, coal miners, and hard-working laborers. But I am mostly proud to have been raised by a loving, God-fearing, Christian family who taught me right from wrong, to listen to my gut, to shoot you straight, and about the power of love. I value unyielding loyalty, character, integrity, and I understand the necessity and responsibility of looking out for others. My grandma Sharon was my grade school secretary. She had me reciting John 3:16 when I was three years old. My momma Shirley was the librarian at my high school. And still to this day, my grandfathers are the hardest-working men I have ever met. My parents are the perfect combination of grit and grace. My entire family lived within a one-mile radius of my five-and-a-half-square-mile town. I tell you these things because it's important for you to know that we are probably a lot alike. Who I am today is who I was raised to be. The people and the place that shapes me and the values which were instilled in me are why I stand before you. They are why I have chosen to fight like hell for something that I knew nothing about six years ago. As we have just surpassed the 22nd anniversary of 9/11, I could have never imagined the challenges that would find my family over the past two decades. One of the greatest honors of my life will be... will always be supporting Marcus during his service to our country. One of the biggest and most unexpected realizations of my life was the battle we faced following his service, a battle that we faced alone. We tried everything that was readily available to us within the military, VA, and Western medical systems to no avail. I was certain I would lose Marcus to suicide because each failed treatment utterly diminished his hope. When I heard of a plant therapy, Ibogaine, that had worked wonders for one trusted friend, I had absolutely no idea what we were walking into. But when you are desperate to save someone you love, you quickly become willing to consider anything. When it worked, we knew we had to pay this miraculous gift forward to friends and other fellow veteran families who are also suffering. Our organization has turned from a grassroots movement into a global tidal wave of hope and restoration, undoubtedly blessed by the hand of God and responsible for providing a critical lifeline to nearly 1,000 veterans to date. We have now devoted our entire lives to the furtherance of this mission. Of that 1,000, close to 90% have elected to safely pursue the same therapy that saved Marcus's life in 2017, Ibogaine. The results have been utterly astounding and will soon be substantiated by our collaborative study with Dr. Nolan Williams of Stanford University. In addition to the remarkable and undisputable data, week in and week out, we see bondages being broken and lives and families being restored within the veteran community. Ibogaine is best known for its unparalleled efficacy in combating addiction, particularly to opioids, but the benefits reach far beyond the single indication. Ibogaine has tremendous benefits in neurocognitive functioning, trauma processing, and spiritual reconnection. Ibogaine is giving individuals the opportunity to live again, and the ripple-out effect within family units and communities is thoroughly unprecedented. I sit before you today, not just as the CEO of an organization that has driven the science and lived experience of Ibogaine, but as a woman of God, a daughter, wife, and mother. I sit before you, driven by a sense of urgency, compassion, and conviction. I sit before you as someone whose desperate prayers were answered and thus turned into a mandate to help others who are also suffering, because we all love someone. And if you've never been in a position where you are willing to do anything to save that someone you love, I'd encourage you to count your blessings. The truth is that many are suffering. Many Kentuckians are suffering, and they are desperate to save someone that they love today. Just as the opioid epidemic has ravaged your state, it has also ravaged my sweet little hometown of Cardville, Illinois. It has directly impacted my core family unit. You have the opportunity to do something about it. I'm relatively certain I know how the people of Kentucky are hardwired, because the people of southern Illinois are wired just the same. We do what's right. We help those in need. We fight like hell, and we stay the course. Above all, we trust God's lead. I assure you that He is in this. Kentucky has been chosen. You have been called. You have been called into battle, and I encourage you to fight. Fight for these families. Fight for those who cannot fight for themselves. And fight for the great state of Kentucky, because you will lead the way. Countless lives will be set free, and generations will be restored because of your courage. And perhaps because of that, one day, we will all stand and hear, "Well done, good and faithful servant."
Are there any questions or comments from any commission members for either Marcus or Amber Capone? Go ahead.
Hi, I have one question. Can you hear me? I apologize for being late. I was held up in Louisville. I just had a question. You talked about your program. Could you describe it a little bit for us?
Absolutely. So someone had given us the opportunity for this in 2017. We were not in a position where we could even think about logistics around this. We showed up, and we... it was paid for. The support was there. And the very first thing Marcus said to me after emerging from this experience was, "This is it. Our community is centered around helping one another." And from then to today, our program has become a subsidy to pay for the international retreat experience, as well as all of the preparation support and integration support and ongoing community support long after the experience is complete. We don't provide treatments. We provide subsidies and all of the wraparound support to make them successful. Thank you.
Of course.
Any other questions or comments? I have just one, and it relates to what you just mentioned. One of the challenges this commission is faced with is fortifying the treatment and recovery infrastructure in this state, a state which is very financially strapped. And the amount of resource that is expended on the acute phase of treatment for opioid use disorder strains the ability to build out the long-term infrastructure that is needed to help support long-term durable recovery. In what way does your program help establish those supports, albeit within a different framework from what we are looking at as the commission?
Absolutely. The core... the most important part is the one-on-one therapeutic support before and after the experience, especially after the experience. And so, our program provides the one-on-one support, as well as group integration support and accountability, and then ongoing programmatic services to really capture and maximize this window of opportunity. So whether that's, you know, the working through the complex trauma initially, and that moves into other lifestyle shifts, like developing a meditation practice or getting plugged in with other, in our case, veterans who are learning how to... learning new ways of being.
Got you. Thank you. Anything else from anyone? We're going to have one last speaker before we break for what's going to be an early lunch. We are running ahead of schedule. And at this time, I would like to call Ms. Susan Osterman, who is the president of the
Good morning. I'll apologize in advance for being emotional. I'm not a public speaker, never wanted to be, and hope to not be someday. My name is Susan Osterman, and I am the founder of the Valoma Memorial Foundation. The term "Valoma" is a Sanskrit word that means "out of natural order." It's a word that resonates deeply with parents like me, parents who've lost a child. The foundation was born from the desire to create memorial gardens where parents could grieve together and honor the lives of our child... our children, lives that were often filled with unnecessary shame and humiliation. Our focus continues to evolve because there is an overwhelming lack of resources for our population. We encounter stigma and discrimination, not unlike our children. We are not always met with open arms from bereavement organizations because our children had a substance use disorder, and the stigma associated with addiction allows others to view our loss as less tragic. We aim to fill that gap by offering resources such as free national grief support that is manned by volunteers who also lost a child. Our services are confidential because many parents still grapple with the shame and do not have an outlet to grieve. This is a pivotal moment, an opportunity to make a real difference in the lives of those being held captive to their addiction. Ibogaine treatment holds the potential to bring about transformative change, not just for individuals battling opioid addiction, but for their families, communities, and society at large. Kentucky can lead the way to reshape our nation's response to this epidemic. But to truly understand the urgency of this initiative, we must delve into more personal stories that underscore its importance. At the heart of this issue lies a humanitarian crisis. I reside just outside of Philadelphia, a city grappling with its own unique drug crisis, exemplified by a substance involved in my son's death, Xylazine. We also provide direct outreach to unhoused individuals in the Kensington section of Philadelphia, because my son once told me that that was the only place he felt part of a community. A few weeks ago, we had to send someone to assist a 24-year-old woman because she had maggots feeding from her legs from the wounds caused by Xylazine. She was unable to clean and wrap her legs herself because she had just had her right arm amputated for the same reason. She refused to go back to the hospital because they shamed her and would not treat her opioid withdrawal symptoms, causing her to find relief back on the street, consuming dangerous illicit fentanyl and Xylazine. The chances are, she will die very soon, along with thousands of others. This crisis is horrifying. It highlights the urgency for comprehensive and novel solutions. Those who use drugs are not statistics. They are human beings. They are human beings, and each one deserves compassion, nondiscriminatory healthcare, and immediate access to all potential treatments that address the core of their struggles. Now, I'd like to introduce you to my beloved son Tyler. He was an energetic skateboarder, a talented percussionist in the high school drum line and marching band. He was enthusiastic and his love for everything and everyone was infectious. His radiant smile illuminated any room he entered, and his demeanor had an uncanny way of diffusing tension. He also possessed a remarkable ability to see beyond people's actions, always searching for the pain that might have caused them to be hurtful to others. He had a huge heart and fought for all those who were oppressed. We never knew what to expect on holidays, because he would invite anyone who might be alone. He truly was my mini-me. However, beneath his vivacious surface, Tyler fought a silent battle with anxiety. After high school, he turned to substances for relief. It's crucial to acknowledge that Tyler, like countless others, didn't seek drugs for escapism or euphoria. He was experimenting, searching for ways to alleviate his pain. So it started out with trying his grandmother's pain pills, quickly propelled into a harrowing path of injecting heroin and illicit fentanyl. He underwent traditional treatment on numerous occasions, displaying incredible resilience. At one point, he remained sober for close to a year, just long enough to walk me down the aisle at my wedding. Despite his determination, he could not overcome the spiritual disconnect he felt through treatments with buprenorphine. He said they left him feeling like a shell of a person. I will never discredit the value of buprenorphine and methadone, because it's the only effective resources that we have available right now, and it helps countless individuals. In early 2020, Tyler returned to use, and a trusted physician friend introduced me to Ibogaine as a potential solution. As any concerned mother, I embarked on a vigorous research journey. There were a few things to consider. It would require us to travel abroad and cost over $10,000, which I equated to the same price of a funeral, and I was willing to do whatever I had to to pay for it. You can't put a price on the life of your child when they are slowly dying in front of you. The only known deaths at the time that I could find were previously undiagnosed heart conditions and interactions with substances that were not disclosed by the patient. Again, risks that are far less than continuing to use illicit substances. And finally, it was illegal. But would I go to jail to save my son's life? Of course. Despite the barriers in the dawning process of international treatment, the remarkable success rate of Ibogaine held undeniable allure. I was all in, and so was Tyler. He was determined to reclaim his life. However, the global pandemic ensued, and our efforts were stopped by the inability to renew his passport. Tyler's journey over the following months was tumultuous, one, filled with moments of hope and spirals of despair. Even though he knew he could come home, the shame that was so deeply ingrained in him made him feel more comfortable on the streets than facing his family. In May of 2020, he sought medical help for what we thought was COVID, but it was an infection on his heart caused by reusing syringes. It's important to note that Tyler had been charged with a paraphernalia charge two years earlier for possessing an unused syringe and was placed on probation. It's made him more comfortable to reuse syringes than risk or risk. Tyler had a severe case of endocrinitis and underwent open-heart surgery, where we also faced multiple barriers to receiving the same level of care that a person who did not have a substance use disorder would receive. His treatment was inhumane. He returned home upon discharge and decided to try medical cannabis to help him with his cravings, and it worked very well for him. However, then over the next few months, we faced a barrage of system failures. He was forced to stop using medical marijuana when he was taken into custody for missing an appointment with his probation officer months earlier and incarcerated for two weeks. His release was contingent upon living in a county-approved recovery home that did not allow the use of medical cannabis. He relapsed and attempted to enter treatment, but we learned his Medicaid coverage was unlawfully terminated during his incarceration. He applied for funding assistance through our county, but he was denied because he had a medical marijuana card, even though he volunteered to relinquish it. Our only remaining option was to pay cash to a facility who is now under investigation by the FBI for patient brokering. On October 5th, 2020, Tyler came home after he relapsed again, so we could make a new plan, but he never got to see it through. He died that night in gas station bathroom, two blocks from my house, about 30 minutes after the most profound conversation we had in years. Had Ibogaine treatment been accessible, perhaps I and other parents could have spared the profound pain we experience on a daily basis. I urge this committee to look beyond politics and economic interests here and support this potentially lifesaving initiative. I want to extend my gratitude to all of you, Brian Hubbard, your committee, for taking this bold step. I also want to thank Lieutenant General Steele, Brett Waters, and the entire Veterans Mouth Mental Health Coalition for your advocacy. Words could never convey how grateful I am to be here. Thank you for allowing me to honor Tyler in your beautiful state, and please know that we welcome all bereaved families in Kentucky to utilize our free and confidential services. In closing, I would just like you to think about one more thing. Just consider for a moment the lengths that you would go to if your child had a life-threatening illness. There are thousands of individuals suffering right now, just like Tyler. As this treatment becomes more widely known, there's nothing that's going to stop those parents from attempting to access it. And your vote will directly impact whether or not they can do so safely in this country with the medical parameters that we need. Happy to answer any questions.
Are there any questions from any commission members?
Thank you for your courage to be here, Susan.
Ms. Osterman, thank you for sharing the most visceral experience a parent, a mother, can speak to here with us today. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. It is 11:40. We will now adjourn for lunch, and we will return at 12:30 and resume. We are ready to reconvene for the second half of today's hearing. Now, now call us to order. At this time, I'd like to call Mr. Reed Madison, who is the founder of Tribe Integration Strategies and the parent of an Ibogaine patient. Mr. Madison.
Can you hear me okay? My name is Reed Madison, and I live in Centennial, Colorado, a suburb of Denver. When I first heard about what was happening here in Kentucky, I think I heard about it in June, as it relates to Ibogaine, my first thought was, wow, way to go, Kentucky, given my experience with Ibogaine and our family's experience. I have three boys that are now ages 19, 17, and 16. My boys had to endure some significant trauma over the years, which included my split with their mother in 2013, after which we were devoted to amicably co-parenting the boys. Then they had to deal with their mother's diagnosis of metastatic breast cancer in the fall of 2019, and all of her treatments and surgeries and hair loss for the next couple of years, and then the pandemic and all the challenges that presented to students. They were in middle school and high school at the time. And then, at what appeared to be the height of the boy's mother's recovery from cancer two years into her battle, she lost her life in a tragic accident in her backyard. That's the background to the story that I thought it was important for the commission to hear about my oldest son, Slade, who's now 19. Slade was nine when his mother and I split, and I know it pained him and affected him deeply, like it does, but maybe more so than most. He was a bright and articulate kid, but struggled to fit in during grade school and middle school. He spent a great deal of time on the trampoline in his mother's backyard and got to the point where he was very proficient doing all kinds of flips, front-back flips, twisting flips. He got up to the point where he could do his whole repertoire of flips on the ground, and he would perform them for anybody that wanted to see them, and that helped him make new friends at school. But he may have some still lingering social insecurity, which may have led him to begin experimenting with drugs when he was in the eighth grade at age 13. They say that the drug-taking group at school is the most accepting group to join, and Slade had fallen into that group. It was during his eighth-grade school year that he had found some OxyContin in my bathroom left over from a knee surgery, and his mother found them in possession the next day after he had taken them to school and took several during the school day. Unbeknownst to his mother or me, until a couple of years later, Slade continued to use drugs, including prescription pharmaceuticals. I suspect that Slade, seeing what his mom was going through in 2020, chemo, radiation, mastectomy, and needing to escape from that led him further into drug use. I became aware of the extent of his drug use in July of 2019. We were at an annual family reunion with around 60 relatives or so, which we'd been doing for 50 years at a lake in Montana, and Slade would not come out of his room for several days. On perhaps the fourth day, I went in to check on him. I could tell he wanted to tell me something, and that's when he told me he was going through withdrawals from stopping Xanax and OxyContin. He told me the last few weeks had been extremely difficult for him because of his OxyContin habit. He was, he was at work, he was sneaking into the bathroom and throwing up, trying to deal with those withdrawals without anyone knowing. And I could see with my own eyes at that family reunion how he was struggling physically and mentally from withdrawals, including paranoia and shame that he felt from what everyone must be saying about him, he thought, at that reunion. We returned to Denver from Montana, and Slade continued to struggle from withdrawals for the next couple of weeks. He described hearing strange sounds and how sunlight seemed too bright to bear, and noises like the simple passing of a car sounded incredibly loud and disturbing to him. At one point, he told me that if he still felt like this in one or two weeks, he would want to kill himself. Withdrawals, I learned, are hell. While he continued to recover, his mother and I explored the idea of him going to a wilderness program for a few months to help him learn how to turn his life around. I'd explored this before, but I knew that he wouldn't voluntarily go, and I wasn't going to force it on him while his mother was going through cancer. But this time, he was on board, saying he was ready to stop living like this. And so, his mother, and I, and Slade spent several hours talking to a consultant that we had engaged to help us determine which of the programs would be best for him, and we narrowed it down to two. In August of 2021, we were going to decide which one of the two on a Sunday, and the night before, his mom lost her life. She was killed when she sat in her hammock that was tied into one end of a tree that was rotted, and it came down on her, and it killed her instantly. Slade's two younger brothers were there in the yard, and Slade was at my house. It was nearly too much for everybody to bear, their mother losing her life in an accident while she was at the height of her recovery. Her hair was back, she seemed to be beating metastatic breast cancer, back at work, mountain biking in the mornings. We were all in shock. Slade decided not to go to wilderness camp, and I learned much later, was using oxy again within weeks of his mother's death. In the fall of 2022, things seemed to be going okay. He'd gotten through that tough school year after Monique died and gotten his high school diploma. He was living at my house, he had a job, his driver's license, and his mother's car. In the fall of last year, he received several thousand dollars from his mother's life insurance policy. I decided not to petition the courts to be his conservator, because you have to go before the courts and tell the courts everything, every reason that your son shouldn't get it, and I just couldn't do that, given what had happened. But he started acting a little strange, and on Christmas Eve, I found 28 OxyContin in his bag packed for a trip for the holidays to Montana again. After talking with many people, I made the incredibly tough decision that it was time to present Slade with a choice. Either you go to detox and rehab, or you're going to have to move out. Slade had two younger brothers who were still reeling from their mother's loss. They didn't even go to school that first year. They went to, they had a tutor that helped him get through. And my house could not be a place where OxyContin was available, as vulnerable as they were. And Slade, unfortunately, had still had a lot of the insurance money, so he chose to move out. He was against detox and rehab, and he didn't want to go through withdrawals. I knew then that it would just be a matter of time before his money ran out, but it was his money. I know that one of the reasons he refused is because he didn't want to face the physical and mental challenges of withdrawals again, having gone through it once before. Later, I learned, much later, I started seeing the success rates of traditional detox and rehab, which, for first-time visitors, is less than 10%. You get in, you go through withdrawals, then you're depressed, and all you can think about is taking that drug that'll ease the pain. The day he moved out, I decided to go for a walk and to try to find a podcast to listen to to help me figure out how best to help Slade. I opened Spotify on my phone and searched opioid addiction podcasts. One of the top three that showed up on that search day, luckily, was an interview of Dr. Deborah Mash by a podcaster named Mark Hyman. I say luckily, and I mean luckily, because now, when you search, that podcast doesn't even show up in the top 10 using those same three words. Listening to that podcast was the first time I ever heard the word Ibogaine. Dr. Mash told of her nearly three-decade experience researching Ibogaine and how, in particular, it could end addiction to opioids and other substances with no withdrawals. Dr. Mash mentioned near the end of the podcast that there were clinics in Mexico where one could go now to get an Ibogaine treatment, and that she had sent a relative to one and had a successful outcome. When I arrived home from that walk, where I first learned about Ibogaine, I frantically started searching for an Ibogaine clinic in Mexico to take Slade to. I knew I had a shot at him doing this, because I knew he was close to running out of money, and I knew that if there were a treatment solution where there were no withdrawals, that he might go for it. I suspected, I selected a clinic and started speaking I suspected, I selected a clinic and started speaking with the people that run it to learn more, one of them who was here today. And then I had them speak with Slade, and after talking to them, Slade agreed to go. I picked Slade up from an apartment in another Denver suburb two days before we were supposed to leave for Mexico on February eleventh. He was not in good shape. He was rail thin. His car was sitting on its rims on the curb across the street from the apartment. His money was gone, which was no surprise, and he told me that he would get on the internet every day to quote, "try to find a way to get a hundred dollars so I could buy oxy and not feel like I wanted to die." He told me he was using probably two-hundred-and-fifty to five-hundred milligrams of OxyContin per day. I gave him two-hundred dollars so that he could buy some, because I needed him to make it through the next two days, get him on that plane to Mexico. The treatment center provided medication to help keep the withdrawals at bay before his Ibogaine treatment, which occurred on day five at the clinic. Slade had the treatment in a room with another guest at the clinic and with medical staff present. The treatment lasted all day, and he told me that when he was finally done, around eight PM that night of the treatment, he went outside in the clinic courtyard next to the pool and did backflips for forty-five minutes, every variation that he had ever I picked Slade up from that clinic on February twentieth of this year. We spent one more night at a hotel on the beach, and he told me that before he decided to come to that clinic, he'd almost ended his life. He'd gone to a building in Denver that he and I both know well, planning to jump off. I used to work in the building. There was a balcony on the outside of the fourteenth floor. He said he wasn't sure whether he was going to do it or not. When he got there, the elevator was locked, so he left without following through on his intention. I believe my son, Slade, has not had an opioid since he left that clinic on February twentieth. He spent four months in Glenwood Springs, Colorado, living with a relative and working full-time as a cashier at a supermarket. I would watch him from afar, him not knowing I was there, engaging with the people that went through the cashier's line. I would visit him every couple of weeks to camp or fish. He gained twenty pounds, and he's now back in Denver, living with me, and works at a sandwich shop down the street. I believe he truly values his health now and is very thankful for the chance at a new start. The reason he went to an Ibogaine clinic is because Ibogaine offered him a solution for addiction interruption without withdrawals. He'd been through withdrawals before and knew how bad they were, and I watched him go through them and had seen firsthand how much he suffered. So I feel incredibly lucky that I learned about Ibogaine in time to help give my son a way out of his addiction problem before it was too late. I think there's a pretty good chance he may not be alive today had Ibogaine not been available to him. So, thank you for your time and listening to our story, and I'm hopeful that one day Ibogaine becomes available here in the United States, because it works and it will save lives.
Do any commission members have any questions for Mr. Madison or comments?
Comments? First, thank you. I am a mother who lost her son to opioid with fentanyl poisoning in 2020. If you have not experienced that, as you have the disease journey, you cannot imagine the horror and pain that a parent goes through. Thank you, and I understand, and I appreciate you coming all the way from Colorado to encourage this Commonwealth to do what I think will be the right thing.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Mr. Madison, thank you for coming at personal time and great expense to see us today. Thank you.
Thank you.
Now I'd like to call Ms. Angela Hargrove, who is the wife of an Ibogaine patient and the senior director for Elego Health Research. Pardon me if I said that word wrong.
It's close to now. Elego. Oh my gosh, that's coming after all these stories. It's been quite an emotional day. Thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of the commission, for hearing us all out today. Can you hear me? Is that better? And yeah, my name is Angela, and I'm the proud mother of three sons, and I too hail from this great state of Kentucky. I was raised in a very conservative town from here, just thirty minutes away, Bergen, little town, on the lake, Harrington Lake. Some of you know it very well. I'm going off my script here, but I have to tell you, Mr. Catlett, she was my teacher. He kept talking about the teacher, Ms. Catlett. She was my favorite teacher, by the way.
This is the first time y'all had met today?
Yes, I had no idea. I just wanted to bring that up and go off script for one second to just show you how it touches everybody. Everybody you know has been touched by this crisis. That is why I'm so passionate about the work that I do in psychedelic research. But I'll continue now, I just wanted to share that. But yes, I do serve as the senior director for Elego Health Research, where I have spearheaded and established our psychedelic research division, where we currently conduct psychedelic trials. I've been involved in many trials since my husband's life was saved. I'm also a graduate from the University of Kentucky. I love this great state, and I'm a pretty conservative person. Never thought I'd be working in psychedelic research, that's for sure, but here I am. But I've worked in addiction clinical research in the mental health field for nearly three decades now. However, the successes in my life were overshadowed by a deeply personal and harrowing ordeal. I was doing well to keep the family intact. My loving husband, a talented lawyer, who runs his own thriving business, based in Kentucky, by the way, grappled with profound mental health and addiction issues. Under immense professional pressure, a well-intentioned prescription for ADHD led my loving and devoted husband down the treacherous path of Adderall addiction. This soon became the catalyst for his descent into alcohol abuse and other substances. Our family was ensnared in her tornado of addiction. Our household, once brimming with love and laughter, became a stage for traumatic events, hospitalizations, and a seemingly endless spiral of despair. With my connections in the mental health sector, I approached top-tier psychiatrists. But instead of offering solutions, they inadvertently transformed my spirited husband into someone I no longer recognized. He became a zombie. Amidst the chaos, he recalled his introduction to the groundbreaking work of Dr. Deborah Mash with Ibogaine, a connection he'd made years before through Dr. Rick Doblin. He actually met him in person many years ago, before even having addiction issues. I grew up during the Nancy Reagan War on Drugs era. I had my own reservations, but what other options did we have? If we didn't find a solution and fast, our children would be without their dad, and our family would never be the same. That is until a beacon of hope led us to Dr. Boda at the Avante Ibogaine Institute in the Bahamas, a journey not without challenges. He went off his amphetamines and other prescriptions two weeks prior in preparation for his scheduled Ibogaine treatment, and as a result, was besieged by severe withdrawal symptoms. My husband underwent Ibogaine therapy under the astute care of Dr. Boda and his dedicated team, and the transformation was immediate and astounding. I knew it worked the moment we were reunited, because he had that twinkle in his eye I'd never seen. He's now thriving in every way, I'm happy to say. He's a loving husband, a wonderful dad, who takes care of his physical and mental health, exercising daily to live a healthy lifestyle, and abstaining from alcohol and stimulants of any sort for several years now, and I will add, we're going on six years. And it was a one-time, he did Ibogaine once. We returned home to the States, free from the shackles of addiction that once bound our family. The profound transformation in my husband's life is a living testimony of the healing power of Ibogaine, treatment at a time when so many Americans are so desperate for answers to their suffering. My fellow Kentuckians have been disproportionately impacted by the opioid crisis and deserve safe and effective solutions now. Ladies and gentlemen, I sit before you today as both a mental health care professional and a wife of a man who is alive today and thriving because of Ibogaine treatment. I humbly urge the commission to vote in favor of the proposed allocation to research Ibogaine and bring meaningful and lasting healing to those who seek it. And I'm just gonna add, my husband is alive today, I have no doubt in my mind, because we took the leap of faith and we tried an alternative method called Ibogaine, and had we awaited for FDA approval, I don't think he would be here today. So it's, you know, it's just very emotional for all of us, but may God bless you and the great state of Kentucky. Thank you.
Are there any questions or comments for Ms. Hargrove from any member of the commission? Ms. Hargrove, thank you. Well, now welcome Mr. Steve Viola, who is a United States Navy SEAL veteran and the executive director of The Mission Within.
Hey, good afternoon, everybody. Can you hear me okay? So I get the distinct pleasure of keeping you all awake right after eating lunch, so I'm gonna do my best to do that. Thank you for having me. General Steele and staff, thank you for inviting me to be here. I don't want to bury the lead, but I want to leave you, I want to start with two ideas, and then we'll go, we'll delve into it. The first is that we are greater than me. So what we are doing here collectively is gonna impact a lot of people, and you're breaking trail for others to follow, right? And if you haven't spent any time in the woods, the person that's breaking trail, that's the hardest job, but then everybody can follow that path and go down there. The second I'd like to impart on you is that unity of belief does not necessarily mean uniformity of expression. And so what does that mean? It means that we are all in this together, and we each have talents that we can use to get to where we need to be. I gotta breathe, right, Tommy? Okay. Hi, my name is Steve, Steven Viola, and I'm the executive director of Mission Within. An Ibogaine clinic in Mexico. I'm a second-generation Lebanese Italian and the youngest of seven, but blended family raised in South Texas. I joined the Navy in December of 1986, became a Navy SEAL in 1999. I retired in December of 2016. During my time in service, I was a lead explosive and mechanical breacher, which meant I was exposed to a lot of explosions. I was also a combat medic, where I saw a lot of pain and suffering from fellow service members. I rose to the rank of master chief and became a command master chief. I've spent most of my adult life conducting risk assessments, crisis intervention, and conflict resolution. The thirty years in the military made me a trained observer. What does that mean? I only report on what I've observed and without bias. I've also learned a lot of unhealthy coping skills along the way, what I call hitting the manual override, a coping mechanism I use to suppress my feelings, to deal with what I was exposed to on deployments. This led to a moral catastrophe and built a lot of misunderstanding of how I managed my anxiety, anger, and hypervigilance on a daily basis. What became a miserable twenty years for me was just that miserable. I managed my anger and hypervigilance like most good commandos do, by compartmentalization and avoidance mixed with alcohol and a dash of anger for good measure. Simply put, I was unable to access joy. That may sound strange for a commando to speak of accessing joy, but underneath the anger, the pain, and the suffering and hypervigilance was a human being that lost their way and lost contact with themselves. So I started on an adventure to see what had happened to me. While on active duty, I went to be evaluated at the National Intrepid Center of Excellence, or better or more commonly known as NICO. It's a Department of Defense organization dedicated to improving the lives of patients and families affected by traumatic brain injuries. They take a holistic approach treatment, which is to say they examine the whole human from diet, physical exams, and diagnostic tests, to include psychological evaluations. I had no idea what I was in store for when I arrived, but I'll tell you what, it turned out to be a good news, bad news situation. The good news was I had greater than ten traumatic brain injuries and had maladaptive coping mechanisms. The bad news was I was limited on the healing and recovery by the treatment protocols that were offered. The standard approach was to medicate, make a few lifestyle changes, talk therapy, move on. I learned that I was an emotional coward and had avoided being vulnerable at all cost. I also learned about PTSD. Now, I didn't like the sound of that. Who wants to have a disorder? As a medic, I never treated a gunshot disorder, I treated a gunshot injury, and I attempt to change the narrative every time I speak about post-traumatic stress, I replace the disorder with injury, or just PTS. The protocols at NICO were all well-meaning, but the pharmaceuticals only succeeded as numbing agents and failed to address the problem. Living a life of numb is no way to live at all. I set out to find alternatives to help me on the road to recovery, and my research led me to a treatment that other SOF operators said could change your life. After leaving the military, I drove deeper into this exploration to the treatment, and was asked by a philanthropist in the Bay Area to observe the treatment in person and report back. I was living in San Diego at the time, and the treatment was being held in Mexico at a clinic called The Mission Within, about ninety miles south where I lived. I was in Mexico for four days and three nights, and by the end of the treatment, I witnessed a profound change in the patients, some of which I knew from my time in the military. The change was most recognizable in their faces. Where were once strained and weathered faces were now replaced by relief and joy. Their participants opened up, it was as if they had found what they were looking for, and they wanted to share it with the world. My report to the philanthropist was simple. If you wish to save lives right now, I highly encourage you to support and invest in this new treatment protocol. Suffice to say, they wrote a check for three-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars and supported this wonderful treatment called Ibogaine, so that others may benefit from it. My emotional struggle would continue through two more months. Later, I was approved and scheduled for the treatment myself. On November seventeenth, two thousand seventeen, I began my journey with Ibogaine. And if I haven't said it, Marcus Capone, thank you for breaking trail for the rest of us. I appreciate it, brother. To say it was a good, was good is an understatement. To say the treatment was good is an understatement, because I could feel again. Post-treatment, I could feel my heart beating, and my mind was clear and present in the here and now, which is a beautiful gift, and not tortured from my terrifying and troubled The Ibogaine was the easy part. Now what I had to do is what they call the work, which is self-discovery and integration, and relearning and discarding my maladaptive behaviors that no longer served me, and I instead choosing compassion for myself. Now that may sound odd, but I learned that the best way to teach others about compassion is to extend it to yourself first. I was trained to run towards gunfire. Now I run towards those that are vulnerable. How do we bring this medicine to the public and at scale? I previously held a position as a SOF liaison at the Uniformed Service University Bank, and I worked directly for Dr. Dan Pearl and Nobel Prize winner Dr. Stanley Prusner, director of the Institute of Neurodegenerative Diseases at the University of California, San Francisco. The goal was to raise awareness for veterans and professional athletes about head injuries and research around PTSD, and try to minimize the suicide rate for those in those communities. and try to minimize the suicide rate for those in those communities. I was very fortunate to have been able to work with and better understand the world of traumatic brain injury and neurodegenerative research from that perspective. But unfortunately, the research can only be performed postmortem, the tragedy being that most of the brain samples were from veterans who had died by their own hand, their families having donated their brains as a last act of service to this great country. Devastated by the prolific suicide rate among retired service members, I changed tactics and became a plant medicine integration coach to assist veterans in their healing journeys. To be clear, plant medicines like Ibogaine aren't for everyone. They require rigorous commitment, courage, and on behalf of the patient, they need to be involved with it from day one till day forever. I cannot deny what I've been through personally and in the lives of many others. If Ibogaine was, has the potential of successfully treating traumatic brain injury and addiction, then we owe it to the people of Kentucky and every single one of my brothers and sisters who took their own life. Ladies and gentlemen of this committee and commission, I would humbly ask, as a veteran, as a life coach, as a professional, and more importantly, as a human being, that you approve the underlying proposal. Plant medicine like Ibogaine is giving people a chance to become whole again. Isn't that alone worth the investment? That's all I got. Subject to your questions, thank you for your time.
Are there any questions or comments from any commission members from Mr. Viola?
I have so many comments I want to make. Can we talk later?
Absolutely, ma'am. Be delighted.
Thank you very much, sir.
Yes, sir.
This time, I'd like to call Dr. Steve Katsikas, who is a psychologist at Spalding University in Louisville, Kentucky.
Good afternoon. The commission, to Brian, thank you, and thank you to all for your work today. I stand completely humbled by the stories I've heard today, by the triumph and tragedy that comes with opioid abuse, by the strength of my fellow Kentuckians and fellow Americans. Thank you for your service to the service people who have shared their stories today as well. My name is Dr. Steve Katsikas. I'm a clinical psychologist and professor at Spalding University. Earned my PhD in clinical psychology at the University of Arkansas and started my career in Miami, Florida, where I eventually was the director of child and adolescent services for the University of Miami School of Medicine. I served as the department chair for psychology at Spalding for 14 years, and now I'm the director of Spalding's Office of Sponsored Programs and Research. I had the distinct pleasure of serving as the president of the Kentucky Psychological Association in 2020. Opiate misuse and addiction is not a simple issue. It is not a simple issue that is a matter of willpower. It is not understood well as simply making bad choices. It is a disease. I didn't used to believe that, but the more I've worked with patients and clients, the more I've understood the literature and kept up with it, I've shifted my understanding to understand that addiction is a disease. Anyone who's seen a loved one struggle with addiction sees the irrational and self-damaging way that the drug, especially opiates, changes the core of who that person is. It's been estimated that 80% of addiction to heroin starts with a legal prescription. 80%. I find tremendous compassion for individuals who are in the struggle in their families. Some individuals seem to be born with a nervous system that finds opiates to be extremely reinforcing. It's just how they are. And exposure to opiates at the wrong time, in the wrong place, in the face of trauma and psychological discomfort and emotional problems and problems in living make it very possible for individuals to fall into addiction through no fault of their own. This issue is also very personal and painful to me. I lost my best friend to opiate addiction. It's a scourge in our community, and it does more than destroy individual lives. It is a driver of widespread misery and social chaos. It increases the rates of mental illness in our communities. So it worsens underlying mental illness. It also pushes people who are psychologically fragile into mental illness and can cause psychological, behavioral, and cognitive problems. There's a strong association between substance use in general and suicide, with a tenfold increase in the likelihood of suicide for somebody who is abusing substances. That increase goes to 15 times when we're talking about opiates. Secretary Freeland, you and I had an opportunity to work on a task force related to youth suicide, and I know you care very much about this issue as well, but suicide is inextricably connected to opiate addiction. It also drives homelessness. We've seen increases across the country that track addiction and overdose rates. Just as an example, in Dayton, Ohio, they reported a 277%, almost threefold increase in overdose-related problems. Those overdose-related problems, those overdoses tax our EMS system. Our EMS system is less prepared to respond to accidents, cardiac events. It's widespread chaos. There's also impacts widely across our Commonwealth on children. Parental substance abuse, including opiate addiction, is a major risk factor for childhood maltreatment. Children of parents who abuse drugs are three times more likely to be abused and four times more likely to be neglected. And intergenerational patterns can occur. The abuse and neglect, the adverse childhood experiences create a trauma that often results in the need to self-medicate later in life, resulting in addiction, and the cycle continues. So I want to talk a little bit about Ibogaine. I want to talk about what we know. I want to talk about the science, what we know, what we think we know, and what we need to know. And I'm really proud to be in the company of some amazing researchers who have presented today. It's very gratifying that they're here today, so I appreciate them so very much. I led a research team at Spalding University, a small university down the road in Louisville, Kentucky, that was exploring Ibogaine between about 2013 and 2018. I was with a group of our doctoral students who had started to hear stories and anecdotes coming out about Ibogaine treatment that was occurring abroad, and we got very curious about it, got really interested in it. And the students wanted to collect data and learn more about Ibogaine. So we conducted a study. It was retrospective. We asked people who'd been through treatment about their experience, and then we published our results in the Journal of Psychoactive Drugs in 2017, and then presented it at an international conference. As far as I know, we're the only group lab research team in Kentucky that's explored Ibogaine. So you can imagine my surprise when I got a call a few months ago about what was happening here. Our study found that 84% of the participants indicated that Ibogaine was helpful or very helpful for the reason they sought treatment, with 82% saying that they were better or much better as a result of treatment. More than half of our participants explicitly told us that the psychedelic experience, the visions that occurred during treatment were important, were key, were essential to their self-understanding and their ability to get better and to get healthier. So what do we know about Ibogaine? We added a little bit to the literature, but the literature is growing at an interesting rate. There's ample evidence that's anecdotal that Ibogaine impacts opiate craving and withdrawal, but as I was taught as a graduate student, anecdote and data are not the same thing. And even plural anecdote is not data. So we do need to look to the studies. And fortunately, there have been a growth in studies that have been examining this. We've heard the name Dr. Deborah Mash a number of times, and she's a research neurologist who had a landmark study with 191 participants in St. Kitts who received Ibogaine for their addiction. She found similar results to ours, with 90% of her participants reporting significantly decreased withdrawal and craving symptoms, 87% saying that they had gained insight into their addiction. And one piece that I haven't heard today that I think is really important, 68% reported that they were now aware of their need for themselves to become sober or abstinent. This insight piece, I think, is a key outcome in Ibogaine treatment and one that you don't necessarily see in other forms of treatment. There are three double-blind placebo studies, one of which was randomized, that found similar results in reductions of craving and withdrawal in the literature by GLEU. And one of the more interesting studies, I hope that you have come across it and read it, is by Koch, who did a meta-analysis, which essentially took all of the published studies that were of a certain quality, grouped all of the data together for all the people who were reported in those studies. So there were 24 studies used, including our study down at Spalding. And Koch found the same kinds of results where individuals had significant reductions or absence of withdrawal and craving post-treatment. Animals potentially for the treatment of alcohol, stimulants, and even nicotine addiction. There's some wider pieces there that are worth exploring. So what do we need to know? What's left? What are the unknowns related to Ibogaine? Well, we certainly need to know more about safety when it comes to Ibogaine. We need to know the precise mechanism of potential issues that relate to cardiac functioning that can be mitigated, has been shown to be mitigated through good protocols, but I think any good advancement of a medication, safety is an important primary concern. We need to have better information, I think, about effective dosing. So what does effective dosing look like over time? We need a better understanding of how long is that reset open? What does that window look like from an individual who takes Ibogaine and gets that pause on withdrawal and craving? What's the role of booster sessions or potentially microdosing? These are unknowns or not known enough, in my opinion. And then the last piece, which is, I think, really important, is how does Ibogaine fit within an archipelago of other treatments? So Ibogaine, as you've heard from so many people today, is a part of recovery. What are the other parts that we need to add? We need to facilitate that make the Ibogaine treatment experience maximize its benefits for folks? So kind of in summary, I want to thank everybody. I want to thank this commission for your work and the work that is to come and the decision, the incredibly important and difficult decision that is before you. I want to acknowledge how remarkable that it is that we are having this meeting in Kentucky, that all of you have traveled, so many of you have traveled to be here today. That's remarkable. Given the robust and preliminary evidence supporting Ibogaine and the substantial opioid settlement funds, Kentucky stands at a very interesting time in terms of being able to pioneer Ibogaine trials in the United States. This effort could spotlight Kentucky's commitment, harnessing its world-class universities and scientific research facilities and talent, and our compassion, the way that we care about individuals who are suffering in their families. Considering the profound societal impact of this crisis on individuals, on their families, on our communities, and on this entire Commonwealth, it's incumbent upon us to explore every conceivable solution. Investing in Ibogaine research could potentially lead to a new form of treatment for everybody, for Kentuckians, for fellow Americans, for everybody. We have some treatments, but we have an opportunity to explore another one, one that has shown much promise and needs the support to take it to the finish line. It's my opinion, and I think many of your opinions, and probably the opinion of everybody behind me and watching on YouTube right now, that the people of Kentucky deserve this opportunity for healing. So thank you for your time today. I appreciate it. I have two minutes and two seconds if there are any questions or comments.
Any questions or comments for Dr. Katsikas? Thank you very much, sir. Thank you. We will have one more testimonial before we break for a 10-minute break, and at this time, I would like to call Ms. Talia Eisenberg, who is founder of Beyond Ibogaine.
Thank you. Thank you, Chairman Hubbard, and members of the commission for allowing me the opportunity to speak today. I would also like to thank the members of the Veteran Mental Health Leadership Coalition, Reason for Hope, and all the other individuals and organizations represented here today for their very powerful remarks. My name is Talia Eisenberg, and I'm an entrepreneur, a wife, and a mother. However, my story today begins on September 7th, 2007, when, like many other people across the United States, I had a dentist appointment for a routine procedure. As expected, I was given pain medication to reduce my discomfort during and after the procedure. I left the appointment and, as directed, went to a pharmacy on my way home and took a 10-milligram tablet of Vicodin to help me rest and recuperate. This action changed my life forever. Like 15 million Americans each year, I was pain-free, without discomfort, and able to begin healing from this otherwise routine root canal, but I also felt much more. I took the Vicodin as prescribed. It gave me a feeling that I hope I never forget. For the first time in my recent memory, I had an overall pleasant numbness and separation from a sense of dread and anxiety that I had not previously understood. When I took this opiate, I felt at ease and better equipped for life as a young adult in a very dynamic, demanding city and a world of increasing pressures and stress. I had no awareness of the changes that were taking place in the neurochemistry of my brain, but I continued to take the medication and was increasingly aware of a shift in my outlook, energy, and sense of peace and satisfaction with my life. My anxiety was erased, and the constant worries of being a young adult and making life choices faded. When this prescription ran out, I had forgotten about the dental procedure. No follow-up appointment was required, but I had two refills available, so I visited the pharmacy to receive more and more medication. More prescriptions were filled. This continued for months until eventually I was informed that no additional refills were available. More than disappointment, I had a feeling of dread as I was aware of my physical dependency. I experienced severe withdrawal symptoms. I found alternative sources of opiates to maintain feelings of pleasure and to avoid withdrawals. I turned to the secret use of what I was told was opium and then heroin to stave off withdrawals, and I continued to seek the pleasures of continuous use of opiates. I can say now what I could not reveal as a woman in my early 20s, I was a heroin addict. I knew I did not want to continue this behavior. I tried to reduce my dependency, but I could not endure the symptoms of withdrawal for more than a few hours. The physical and mental anguish was excruciating, but the shame and guilt prevented me from revealing the situation to the people who loved me most, including my parents and my boyfriend who had never used a drug in his life. This addiction continued for more than a year and into the next. Eventually, I could not hide my addiction. My parents and family found out and were shocked, extremely worried, and thank God, eventually very supportive. Over a two-year period, I went to six of the top rehabilitation centers in the US. I was admitted, I participated, and followed directions to the best of my ability. I tried to get sober by doing what the experts said. One suggestion that I followed was to begin taking a maintenance medication called Suboxone. The idea of stopping my opiate addiction by taking opiates seemed obviously contradictory, but like approximately 2 million people each year in the United States who pay approximately $300 per month or nearly $600 million each year, I settled for this allegedly life-saving medication. If living on Suboxone forever was a life-saving solution, the horrible side effects made life not worth living. I felt depressed and like I had little energy to finish college or participate in daily activities. I wasn't in withdrawals, but I still wanted to use different, stronger opiates. I went in and out of rehabs to try and get and stay sober but would relapse within weeks of my discharge. My family invested hundreds of thousands of dollars and experienced untold stress and trauma. and trauma. I worked to find a community of people that used opiates. I was able to acquire pills through doctors, friends of friends, or referrals, and sometimes heroin off of the street. I am forever grateful that fentanyl had not yet entered the illicit drug supply, or I would likely not have had the opportunity to change my life, get an MBA, become a successful entrepreneur, a mother, a spouse, and honor the generosity and love of my family or be standing before you today. I was twenty-three when I contacted a friend with whom I had used opiates to ask where I could get more. To my surprise and dismay, he said he was clean, happily married, and working a full-time job that he really loved. He was no longer using opiates. He explains that he had returned from a trip to Mexico to try a plant medicine called Ibogaine. I had never heard of this substance, but I knew this friend very well, and if it had, in fact, enabled him to stop using and have the strength to stay stopped, I knew I needed to try it. I did some quick internet research. I read about certain risks, but I rationalized that the risk could not be worse than my using IV heroin. I called a clinic and bought a plane ticket to Mexico. I went to a place that was unequipped to provide safe Ibogaine treatments. It was what I would call a drive-through detox, and frankly, it was just fine with me. It had no medical infrastructure, no psychotherapy, no preparation or aftercare, and no vision for my long-term recovery. I have since learned that these are core requirements for increasing the success of Ibogaine-assisted treatment. I took a few capsules of Ibogaine, and I endured a twelve-hour experience that was quite nightmarish. I know now it could have been beautiful, but for the lack of any psychotherapeutic preparation, the absence of trained, experienced medical professionals, no clinical infrastructure, no nursing support, and absence of any aftercare or long-term therapeutic integration, I now know precisely how Ibogaine can be administered safely and effectively to individuals and at scale. However, the Ibogaine achieved what no other therapy or intervention had yet. Soon after leaving, I was able to receive supplementary doses of Ibogaine, and I was totally free from withdrawals for the first time in years, and the psychological symptoms abated with time, along with support from therapists who truly understood the psychospiritual aspects of the Ibogaine experience, which accelerated my healing. I had to learn how to be comfortable with feeling emotions again, learned how to eat healthy, get adequate sleep, and many other life skills. I have not had an opiate, illegal stimulant, or alcohol since the Ibogaine experience almost fifteen years ago. The Ibogaine experience contributed much more than a reset of my neurochemistry. I did not experience the deep depression that had accompanied my past efforts to taper or titrate my use of opiates, which always led me to go back. I felt a strong aversion to the idea of using opiates after my Ibogaine experience. I recall going from being unable to not take an opiate to feeling a very strong desire to never use an opiate again, and almost feeling sick from the thought of taking any. More compelling and important was a deeply personal and profound sense of purpose underlying my desire to expand my experience of recovery and develop new skills and understanding of the purpose of my existence, far more than detox, which I had experienced numerous times at other rehabs. I felt a newfound passion for pursuing a life of meaning and growth and helping others. This was absolutely unlike any other experience of getting sober. I had the clarity and desire to make life changes. Unlike every other effort to achieve sustainable recovery, during the Ibogaine experience, I seemed to witness the entire history of my life from a bird's-eye perspective, without the fear, guilt, shame, blame, and dreaded unworthiness that accompanied going to conventional rehab. I seemed to observe symbols and images from my life and the lives of some of my ancestors. Although the beginning was very dark and challenging to get through, especially without the support of a guide or therapist prior, I was entirely rational the whole time and could remember a huge portion of the experience afterwards. Rather than feeling broken, afraid, ashamed of what I had become, and desperate for the end of my chemical dependency, I came to want to know and experience more of my own life like never before. I wanted this deepening sense of feeling alive in the present and the possibilities of the future for myself, and even for those in my family who had come before me and made my existence possible. I was connected to a sense of affirmation, meaning, and felt motivated to understand it better. I had been a hopeless heroin addict mere hours before this began. The Ibogaine showed me how the opiates were poisoning my body and my mind, and I vowed then during the experience to never put this poison in my body again. Since this time, I have contributed to making access to medically safe, scientifically-based, ethical Ibogaine-assisted treatment for chemical dependency, mood disorders, and PTSD possible. I have helped hundreds of people heal from Ibogaine and have enabled medical doctors, nurses, psychologists, and coaches align their training and skills to deliver the benefits of Ibogaine to help many, many people who, like me, had been hopelessly dissatisfied with conventional methods of seeking relief from a wide range of conditions. I have come to understand that the root cause of my chemical dependency predated my root canal and was a need for relief from the symptoms of untreated intergenerational trauma. At the age of nineteen, on January twenty-seventh, nineteen forty-five, my grandmother, Bella Eisenberg, had been liberated from Auschwitz concentration camp by the Soviet Army after the infamous death march. Along with my great-grandmother, her mother, they then endured unspeakable traumas. Their family had been murdered in front of them, but they both survived and immigrated to the United States to settle in Omaha, Nebraska, where I was born in nineteen eighty-six. Intergenerational trauma refers to trauma that is passed from a trauma survivor to their descendants. In recent years, we have seen an increasing amount of evidence pointing to the existence of a non-genetic heredity of the effects of events such as separation from parents, threat to life, or other traumatizing experiences like famine, and of course horrors such as Nazi concentration camps. Scientists have discovered that this heredity is often mediated by epigenetic regulations of gene expression and may be transferred across several generations. A few key symptoms of intergenerational trauma include emotional numbing and depersonalization, unresolved and complicated grief, social anxiety, isolation, and withdrawal, hypervigilance, fearfulness, memory loss, anger and irritability, and nightmares. In hindsight, these symptoms seem to describe recurring, unexplained experiences in my life growing up and had become somewhat normalized by the time of my root canal and my first experience of pain-reducing opioid medication. Like the citizens of Kentucky and every other state in this country, the pain that I felt so often growing up predated my toothache. When I experienced the relief from the opiates, it was for a pain far deeper than my second molar. It was a pain that had been part of my life from the beginning. The opiates caused me great harm, but also relieved a broad spectrum of uneasiness, distress, insecurity, fears, remorse, regret, and occasional rage that I had not acknowledged or earned through my own actions. I had inherited much of this suffering and came to identify with it. It was not simply that I had pain. I now understand it was more like the pain had me. In a state of chronic suffering, the relief that came from the first prescription opiate caused a feeling of ease, comfort, and freedom that many people might label normal. I felt relief. I felt at peace. I felt normal for the first time. After my experience of Ibogaine, my symptoms of chemical dependency had indeed been arrested and my addiction interrupted. I felt untethered from opiates and, for the first time, able to passionately pursue a life worth living. Sorry. I want every person in Kentucky and beyond who has come to identify with their problem of chemical dependency to experience their version of my transformation. This is why I co-founded an Ibogaine Addiction and Trauma Treatment Center in Cancun, Mexico. Now I spend all day, every day, talking with parents and loved ones of people who have tried every other available method to find relief from addiction to opiates, increasingly fentanyl, as well as veterans, first responders, active-duty military, and law enforcement personnel who have truly run out of options and hope for relief from PTSD and suicidal ideation. They are beyond desperate for any solution. It is my honor and privilege to help these individuals safely access Ibogaine at our clinic under the care and support of numerous licensed, credentialed medical professionals and clinicians. We have successfully treated numerous Kentucky residents over the last couple of years, and outreach to our clinic from Kentucky residents has spiked significantly since the commission's bold announcement to consider funding Ibogaine research and development. I can think of a no more worthy cause than to invest in this research and development of clinical infrastructure for Ibogaine here in Kentucky, so citizens of this great state are no longer forced to go abroad but can achieve healing at home. Finally, should you choose to support this initiative, I am confident that you will look back upon your vote someday and count it amongst the most impactful moments of your lifetime. You will be truly helping those whose lives have been stolen by dependency to opiates and who feel devoid of depth and meaning to achieve a rapid and robust level of healing that current treatments simply cannot and do not match. It is inspiring to see so many people leave Ibogaine treatment, not only free from the grasps of dependence and pain of withdrawal, but also motivated by a deep desire to help others achieve similar healing, growth, and recovery. This was my experience nearly fifteen years ago, and it is why I am here today to tell my story. Thank you for allowing me to do so.
Are there any questions or comments for Ms. Eisenberg from commission members?
I have a question.
Hi.
Thank you for telling your story. We appreciate it. How large is your clinic and who manages the medical facilitation of it?
We have a medical director. We have about four full-time medical doctors. We have about fourteen ACLS cardiac care-trained nurses and about forty-five employees in total, and it's growing. Yes.
Thank you.
And you're welcome to come visit. Yes.
Any other questions or comments?
Thank you.
Ms. Eisenberg, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. We will now take a ten-minute break, reconvene, and go to a conclusion. It is one fifty-four. We are ready to come back to order, and we will proceed through our last witnesses, all the way through public comments to conclusion. Our next witness is Mr. Adam Marr, a United States Army veteran and co-founder of Warrior Angels Foundation and Director of Operations for the Veteran Mental Health Leadership Coalition. Mr. Marr, thank you for being here.
Thank you, Mr. Brian Hubbard. Ladies and gentlemen of the Kentucky Opioid Abatement Advisory Commission, for the great privilege and honor to speak before you today. My name is Adam Marr. I'm the Director of Operations for the Veteran Mental Health Leadership Coalition. Today I come before you as a veteran, a husband, a father, a humble servant committed to the well-being of my community, and an advocate for the healing power of breakthrough therapies like Ibogaine as a treatment modality for addiction and trauma. After my military journey as an Apache helicopter pilot, which took me all the way from flight school in Alabama to the skies over Iraq, I was forever changed by war. Experiences of loss, taking life in the line of duty as an attack pilot, and witnessing the effects firsthand of traumatic brain injury and post-traumatic stress led me to co-found the Warrior Angels Foundation, an organization my brother and I started in 2015 to help veterans heal these wounds through alternative therapies, an endeavor that I never thought would be so demanding and personally traumatizing. The mental toll of trying to help address the signature wound of war since 2015 while witnessing the plight of countless brothers and sisters in arms was overwhelming for my own mental health. Friends like former Army Specialist Brad Payne would lose his battle with opioids and addiction, ultimately succumbing to a heroin overdose because it was easier for him to get access to that than the opioids that he had become addicted to. Even more tragic, considering that my brother and I were in the process of supporting his healing journey. Running a veteran support nonprofit is no easy feat, especially offering services to our traumatized veteran community. Between that, my own substance abuse, financial hardship, a struggling marriage, and the shock of nearly losing my youngest brother, also an Army veteran, to suicide, I had gotten to the point where I was redlining the engines of my life in a downward spiral that I didn't think I could recover from. It was in this hour of my greatest need that something amazing happened. The same veteran community that I was helping came through for me, as they always have, this time leading me to the capable hands of Dr. Martine Polanco and The Mission Within. Five years ago, on the weekend of my thirty-fifth birthday, I received the gift of Ibogaine. The all-night session was an intense struggle that came in the form of two small capsules and an EKG heart monitoring system, under the watchful eye of trained physician and his team. Translating the experience into words seems almost an injustice, but it's essential for comprehension. As the effects of the medicine sparked within my system, I found myself lifting off and going inward seemingly all at once, flying low-level over the meandering rivers of my own subconscious. It was far from passive. Rather, I became an active explorer, making new discoveries within myself. I was able to examine the memories and inner dialogues that have shaped my life up to that point, but with the added advantage of a pilot's eye view, uncolored by ego and free of judgment. The experience granted me insights from numerous vantage points, enabling me to reassess life's pivotal moments up to that point that had been plaguing me, not just from my perspective, but also as if I were standing in the shoes of those that I'd interacted with. This overwhelming shift in perspective felt akin to a hard reset, or perhaps a profound defragmentation of my emotional and mental drive. I was finally unburdened. After years of being weighed down by a life of duty and stressors, I felt released, as if years of toxic programming in my wiring had been cleared, leaving space for my authentic soul's thought and feeling to emerge. Now let's be clear, Ibogaine wasn't a magic cure that miraculously healed me. The struggles and challenges didn't vanish overnight. However, the way I engaged with them profoundly changed. What Ibogaine offered was a crucial paradigm shift. It was no longer about attacking everything in my life to the point of burnout. It was no longer about seeking an escape, a cure, or a fix for everything. Rather, it became a lesson in the art of daily release, renewal, and rebirth, mind, body, and spirit, in a perpetual dance of growth and balance. As a result, the spiritual and psychological reboot did more than just put out the engine fires that had plagued me. It now provided me with the navigational charts for ongoing healing. I moved forward, recalibrated, with a newfound sense of balance propelling me into a life where the horizon finally seemed open and the skies infinitely more navigable. My wife and I overcame our darkest nights, and we'll be celebrating our fourteenth year of marriage this October. I have become a more caring, loving, and selfless husband to my wife, Alicia, my two daughters, Amelia and Aria, and my son, James Austin. They're my everything. Most astonishingly to me, this work has led me back to my Christian faith with a much deeper spiritual understanding than I could have ever dreamed of attaining. Just a few days ago, I reconfirmed my public acceptance of Jesus Christ through baptism at my small church in rural Alabama, a day I never thought or imagined a few short years ago. God is so good, for His love and His mercy endures forever. I owe an immeasurable debt to Dr. Martine Polanco and The Mission Within for granting me access to Ibogaine in Mexico, when the nation that I fought for and became so broken trying to help support wouldn't allow it. We must do better. So now, aside from treasuring time with my family, I devote myself entirely to fostering and advocating for healing. and advocating for healing through these groundbreaking medicines now that I have been able to truly strengthen and heal myself. At the Veteran Mental Health Leadership Coalition, we've united a formidable alliance: scientists, doctors, therapists, legal experts, CEOs, and veteran leaders, each committed to championing this cause for years and in some case decades. Yet, what this commission is contemplating here in Kentucky is unparalleled to anything we have seen thus far. It has the potential, I'm sorry, I missed right here. Together, our almost fifty partner organizations and almost one hundred members have not only served countless veteran lives, but also labored to educate open-minded leaders such as yourselves about the responsible and effective use of these therapies. In the past year alone, the VMHLC has secured twelve million in funding across four states for innovative programs supporting other breakthrough therapies. Yet what this commission is contemplating here in Kentucky is absolutely unparalleled to anything that we have seen thus far. It has the potential for unprecedented impact. Since May of this year, the eyes of the nation have been fixed on the commission and the state for what's unfolding here. Ladies and gentlemen of the commission, please let me close with an expression of my deepest respect and gratitude for each and every one of you and what you're doing. You stand on the brink to be national pioneers, considering IbaGAY as a bold solution to the opioid crisis, a move that could redefine healing and recovering not just in Kentucky, but for the entire nation. All glory to God who strengthens me, this movement, this medicine, this commission, and the great state of Kentucky. Thank you so much.
Are there any questions or comments for Mr. Marr? Mr. Marr, thank you for your service to this country, your time, your testimony today. Thank you.
Thank you.
And now at this time, I would like to call Mr. Michael Punky Higgs, who is a former U.S. Navy SEAL and Director at the Honor Foundation. Mr. Higgs.
Mr. Hubbard, can you hear me?
I speak up a good bit.
Can you hear me okay?
Now, yes, sir.
Good afternoon, and thank you for your time. Thank you for your patience, your compassion today as you listen to these numerous stories of hope and transformation. I hope that our sharing with you that you'll have a better understanding and perhaps a different perspective of the amazing healing power of plant medicine, and specifically IbaGAY, at a time when no one, no other treatment modalities and drugs, at a time when other treatments, modalities, and drugs have failed. My name is Michael Higgs. I'm a retired Navy SEAL of thirty years, finishing my active-duty time as Command Master Chief for a West Coast SEAL Team. I've had fifteen rotations, multiple combat tours during my service, the last one in 2015. I'm a graduate of the University of Southern California with a Masters in Business, and Southern Illinois with a Bachelor's in Education and Curriculum Development. Post-military retirement, I served both the private sectors and government sectors as a program manager, consultant, and in learning and development. I'm currently the Director of Programs for the Honor Foundation in San Diego, California, which is a 501(c)(3) transition program for the men and women of the Special Operations Community. If you asked me four years ago if I'd be up here or anywhere speaking on substance abuse, drug addiction, physical and sexual abuse, multiple losses of life, complex post-traumatic stress, loss, survivor's guilt, moral injury, and attempted suicide, I'd say, where do we start? If you'd asked me about psychedelic-assisted therapy, mindfulness, meditation, deep personal reconciliation, post-traumatic growth, and healing, I wouldn't know where to start. But all the above is part of my story and that of hundreds more of my brothers and sisters who have served their country. I enlisted in the Navy in nineteen eighty-six at the age of nineteen. I left college at East Tennessee, a close neighbor of yours, where I was playing football and running track. I decided to join the SEAL Teams motivated at the time by all the terrorist attacks and hijackings that were prevalent in the mid to late eighties. I was young, full of energy, and I thought I could do my part in making the world a better place alongside like-minded men. I had no clue what the next thirty years would bring, show, or put me through. Well, the eighties were certainly fun, and nineties, work took its toll on my body and my family life, not counting deployments, special operators expected to travel and do arduous training for over two-hundred-and-sixty-five days a year. Our training was strenuous and tested our resolve, our minds, bodies, and for many of us, our families and our marriages. September eleventh ushered in a new chapter in all of our lives, and that of my fellow teammates. Between two thousand and two and two thousand and fifteen, I'd witnessed combat and the loss of teammates and fellow service members. I'd kill or be part of killing more people than I'll ever have on social media and become numb to it. I witnessed multiple deaths of innocent civilians by the enemy and actually, and accidentally by my own hand. I'd suffered blast injuries, memory loss, cognitive decline, chronic pain, migraines, fits of rage, anger, suicide amongst my teammates, drug abuse by my wife from injury, and my oldest daughter from sexual trauma. Multiple failures for them in rehab leading to our divorce, bankruptcy, their homelessness, and the destruction of my family. I'd remained in this feeling of constant combat for fifteen years. After I retired and the war ended, I thought it would stop, but it didn't. I then saw for the loss of more teammates from combat, and then suicide, six specifically since this past October. And finally, the thing I'd heard about but never experienced, flashbacks from my entire life raging so out of control that I decided to take my own life. At the time all this was going on, I was working with another teammate of mine who had had a psychotic break, and he was raging out of control. And I'd reached out to colleagues that I'd seen somehow go away broken and come back fixed, and I'd asked for help, and I kept getting the same answers: The Mission Within, IbaGAY, The Mission Within, IbaGAY. And attached to that also was Marcus Capone's organization, Vets. One day, I'm sitting on my couch about ready to pull the trigger on a gun and end my life and end this constant pain that I'm sitting through, and a knock came on my door from a fellow, fellow brother of mine. I had previously helped him with paperwork for the program, and he had just gotten approved. Excuse me. He had just been discharged from mental hold of the hospital, and he had come to tell me that he was accepted into the program, with the only catch that he would only go if I went with him. I told him I would, not believing that it would help, but anything was better than nothing. You see, at that time, I tried everything at that point: talk therapy, CPT, IPT, TMS, more psychotropics than I think anyone should ever be on, and nothing seemed to work. So what did I have to lose if this didn't? My gun would still be there. Soon after we completed our medical screening, we met with our therapist, and I got into van with four other veterans to drive to Mexico to try Mex, to try medicine I'd never heard of with a doctor I'd never met. I can say now with certainty that getting into that van and answering that door and making that call in the lives of the other men, it saved my life and the lives of all the other men that I was with. Since then, I've seen hundreds of men and women from all walks of life, all professions, come back from the brink of death, reunite with their families, their souls, and with I was able to reconcile more pain in my life over the course of three days than in the forty years of therapy combined, and I wasn't alone in this experience. Since that weekend, I've dedicated my life to working in the veteran space and advocating for these medicines. I've become a Psychedelic Integration Coach, a facilitator, and up until October was the Director of Operations for The Mission Within, spending three weekends a month serving my brothers and sisters. Because of IbaGAY treatment, I was able to get off every drug I was on for anxiety, paranoia, depression, sleep, cognitive function, and pain. I now meditate, I sleep through the night, I have more compassion for myself and others, and I'm more accepting of myself and others. Above all, IbaGAY treatment has brought me and so many hundreds of others the peace that we were looking for. I mentioned earlier that my former... I mentioned earlier that my former wife and my oldest daughter suffered from drug and opo, opioid abuse. That abuse and the shame and the guilt and pain never left them. I tried for years to get both of them to come with me to Mexico and just try experience, and neither of them felt they could titrate off their antidepressants or anti-meds long enough to get through the treatment. They were both trapped by fear, and every day for the last fifteen years, I've waited For the last fifteen years, I waited on the call that no one wants to receive. Sadly, two weeks ago, August twenty-eighth, less than forty-eight hours after I've drafted these notes, I received that call. My eldest daughter, who was in pain, knew she would go to the hospital and probably be turned away. She went to the street, and the street delivered. She was found less than twenty-four hours later with fake, fake oxycontin laced with fentanyl. She died at thirty-three. I'm asking the commission today that if you want to help your father, fellow brothers and sisters struggling with addiction and suicide and traumas, don't we owe them the right to try? Thank you for your time today, and I applaud your courage.
Mr. Higgs, thank you for your service to the country, your presence here today, and on behalf of this commission, please accept our deepest sympathies on the loss of your daughter, and thank you for being here. Are there any questions or comments for Mr. Higgs from any commission members?
That was difficult, sir. Thank you for coming.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Higgs. At this time, I would like to call Mr. Stefan Lasmay, who is a NBA alumnus, a native of Gabon, and an immigrant to the United States. Thank you for being in the Commonwealth of Kentucky here with us this afternoon.
My name is Stefan Lasmay. I'm a Gabonese American US citizen, husband, father of four girls. I'm a former professional basketball player and a plant medicine advocate. It's an honor to be here today as we discuss the exploration of ibogas and IbaGAY's powerful therapeutic potential to help combat the growing opioid epidemic in Kentucky. First, I want to thank the state of Kentucky and the Kentucky Opioid Abatement Advisory Commission for providing me with the opportunity to speak today.
Come in on that microphone just a little bit.
I also want to thank all of the people and groups for their dedication and hard work in addressing the opioid addiction crisis here in Kentucky and beyond. Because of many of the people in this room and others, there's a strong foundation upon which we hope to build a successful treatment framework. I also wish to express my condolences for the lives lost to this epidemic, which we've been told number in the thousands over the past three decades, decades, as well as the thousands more connected to them, their family, their friends, neighbors, and more. However, it is immensely encouraging to be here and bear witness to such an action-oriented commission and state government dedicated to finding safe, effective, and efficient answers to this most serious situation. My colleagues and I are grateful for the opportunity to be here to learn and to hopefully collaborate on this important collective effort. It is my sincere hope that together we can help those most in need today to prevent additional unnecessary loss of life, starting now with the people in Kentucky. It is worth mentioning that I already feel a connection to your great state through my time playing basketball for the University of Massachusetts in the mid-two thousand. During my junior year at UMass, Travis Ford of Madisonville, Kentucky, became the head coach, going on to help lead the team back to its nineties level of greatness when the Minutemen were coached by another Kentucky legend, John Calipari. There is something to be said that two of my greatest passions in life have brought me to Kentucky, first basketball and now iboga. I've been a basketball player for nearly my entire life and connected to iboga for even longer. Having, having been born and raising Gabon, a small spiritual country on the west coast of Central Africa, the plant has been part of my very upbringing, culture spiritually, and wellness. In my home country, which holds the largest population of iboga trees in the world, there is a deep reverence for the plant. As a traditional treasure, it is intimately intertwined with the fabric of Gabon's history and remain a pillar of our culture today. Its powerful healing properties, known by the Gabonese and Witi tradition for centuries, have helped the minds, hearts, and body of countless Gabonese and increasingly, increasingly thousands and others around the world. As noble of a substance as iboga is here in the state, it is an ingrained element of Gabonese life. Many grow a single plant in their homes as a symbol of their beloved Gabon. Many microdose the cross root throughout the day to achieve mental clarity, energy, and focus. And in the Witi spiritual tradition, many undergo a prolonged ibogin-induced experience as a rite of passage, a means to understand oneself, commune with the ancestors, and reveal deeper truth about life and humanity otherwise unreachable without the plant's Although IbaGAY, although iboga has been guiding Gabonese spiritual leaders and people for centuries upon centuries, we continue to learn more and more about the plant and its healing abilities. As practitioners, we reverence to the plant's wisdom. We also understand that these abilities need not remain shrouded in mystery or be kept from the rest of the world. If we apply modern science and technologies, we understand that there are more secrets to be revealed within the molecular structure of the plant, and thus a very large healing power that is not yet fully researched. Here, it is worth noting that there is even more promise within the plant than only its primary active ingredient of IbaGAY. Included within the full alkaloid profile, alkaloid profile of iboga tabernathy are various other analog molecules largely unstudied that also possess properties with strong therapeutic potential. It isn't far, it is in fact fair to say that while today research is focused on pure IbaGAY, the plant could hold the key to treating several other mental and physical conditions. One such example is a Columbia University study hypothesis around the reduction, the reduction in symptoms of Parkinson's disease patients who are in an IbaGAY-based treatment regimen. It is therefore imperative that as we continue to research the truly special species of plant, we ensure we study, we study it in its all. It is the entirety, entirety of the plant that may hold the life-altering benefit for even more population of suffering people. In mentioning IbaGAY's power, it is sometimes said that the plant itself will call you to action, and in receiving this call, you thus have an obligation to do your part in realizing the plant's message. I was forced, I was first called to the plant when I was fourteen, fourteen years old, living in Porgeran to Gabon, and then later as a thirty-five-year-old man, father of three beautiful daughters. I'm convinced that iboga in fact always knew I had to experience the world through the lens of basketball to fully learn its potential before I could return to it in its earnest. Basketball, as I mentioned, provided me the opportunity to earn an athletic scholarship at the University of Massachusetts and a major, a major in biology, a subject that created the foundational elements of my scientific understanding of the plant. By then, playing alongside some of... By then, playing alongside some of the world's best basketball players in the N B A, I was exposed to various therapeutic integration of plant medicine, and I fully realized iboga's global power about playing in several countries abroad, including Serbia. I saw time and again, how plants, including iboga, were used across countries and cultures as natural medicines, helping people live healthier, fuller lives. I was so impacted by the pervasiveness of therapeutic plants that after I've finished my playing career, I founded and currently run two U.S. companies, which are dedicated to make plant medicine available to all who can benefit from the healing properties. In running these companies, I forged my experience as a global athlete into the world of commerce, learning firsthand that there is an important, effective, and efficient role for business to play in safe distribution of plant-based remedies to those in the most need. In this way, I realized there are many different roles that are required to work together in order to combat the growing and global opioid addiction epidemic: biologists and healthcare worker, policy advocate and lawyers, investors and operators, and many more. In my life, I've been fortunate to wear a few of these different hats myself and work with many of the others, all of whom have taught me valuable lessons that remain with me to this day. From Gabon to the U.S., to Israel, Russia, Serbia, Greece, and back again, I have accumulated friendships, knowledge, and gifts that have all been an integral part of my journey with iboga, culminating at my current station today. Gabon has provided me with life, family, tradition, culture, and spirituality. The United States has given me my wife and children, my education, new opportunities, and my home today. And now, I'm blessed to be sitting here with the potential to give back to both these wonderful countries and people through iboga. If I'm able to play a small part in facilitating Gabon's national treasure to aid Kentucky's and the U.S. fights against opioid addiction epidemic, I will be acting in service of the most noble goal I could conceive of. Hamed but the small cog in the machine that is required to build in order to advance our fight against addiction, but I'm filled with excitement that I can lend even a small piece of my life experience in partnership with wonderful people in this room today and the many others not here to help preserve what mattered most, the lives of Kentuckyans, Americans, Gabonese people, and those of the entire world. It is my sincere hope that we can continue to research the full wonders of iboga and facilitate its therapy to the global community in an ethical and ecologically sustainable manner. And I fully believe that by starting here in Kentucky, we can help serve those most in need and then hopefully catalyze the significant international advancement in novel plant-based treatment protocols. The people in this room today can be the foundation of something far greater than that exists today and one that lasts generation. Thank you for granting me the chance to speak with you today and for listening to a bit of my journey, one I hope can join in with yours and one that is truly just beginning.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments for Mr. Lasme from any Commission members? Thank you for coming to see us today, sir. Thank you. And at this time, I would like to welcome Dr. David Nassim, who is associated with a non-governmental organization known as Blessings of the Forest. Dr. Nassim. Who has traveled here, by the way, from Gabon.
It's from the U.K., actually.
Oh, I thought you made a much longer journey. That plane long enough unto itself. Thank you.
Hello, everyone.
Lean into that microphone so we can hear you well.
Yes. Hello, everyone. I would like to thank the honorable members of the Kentucky Opiate Abatement Advisory Commission for inviting the Blessings of the Forest organization to speak here today. My name is David Nassim. I am co-director of Blessings of the Forest, or B O T F, nonprofit in the U.K. and an NGO in Gabon. My main focus in B O T F is advocating for traditional peoples' rights associated with iboga and fundraising in the international arena. My background is in Chinese medicine. The founder and other co-director of Blessings of the Forest, Yann Guignan, and our president, Mari-Lou Mibokha Abogay, apologize for their absence due to a COVID infection. I will be introducing the subject of iboga sustainability and the work of Blessings of the Forest in Gabon in order to lay a context for the main speaker who is our honorary president, Master Mubei Boal, who has prepared a video from Gabon for you that we will see shortly. Due to the current political instability in the Gabonese territory, Master Mubei apologizes for not being able to come to this meeting in person. He will introduce himself properly after my statement. Iboga is a shrub which endemically grows most prominently within the Gabonese territory of central west Africa. The alkaloid ibogaine is one of the thirty or so active ingredients identified in the plant. The once nomadic Pygmy tribes have known about the curative effects of iboga for numerous maladies, especially those that would be said in the West to have psychological origin. These peoples have lived in the region for tens of thousands of years and retain some of humanity's oldest genetic lineages. Iboga has been used by humans for untold millennia, but never in the way that the West has begun to use it today. Iboga was first exported to Europe by a French doctor, Griffon de Bellet, one and a half centuries ago. Since that time, iboga has steadily increased in its demand as different continents realize its potential. Since the nineteen-sixties, particularly because of the collaboration of Gabonese professor of pharmacology, Jean Noah Gassita, and American visionary Howard Lotzoff, the American market and the use of ibogaine for addiction, and particularly opiate addiction, has come to the fore. This potential has seen demand skyrocket, and a steady stream of medicine has been drawn out of Gabon and into the manufacturing use of ibogaine in clinical settings, mainly in Mexico. Americans often seek treatment here due to restrictions from the FDA in the U.S. There is also a very large underground market worldwide. This long history of obtaining resources from Africa by any means has been the basis of colonialism that continues today. In direct contrast, the focus of Blessings of the Forest's vision and mission is to support rural communities in developing sustainable and equitable income generating activities from their forest. Our co-developed projects enhance Gabon's culture and natural heritage, providing an alternative to illegal exportation of forest resources and address human wildlife conflict and rural exodus. The traditional communities we support use iboga, which they call sacred wood, as part of their ancestral rituals and cultural practices known as Buete. The main income generating activity that B O T F supports is the cultivation of this key resource, firstly, to guarantee the availability and quality at a low and sustainable price for the benefit of Gabon's Buete communities, and secondly, to develop an alternative supply chain to the eager, illegal, unfair, and unsustainable international trade in iboga. This is achieved under the Nagoya Protocol. The Nagoya Protocol is part of the nineteen ninety-two Convention on Biological Diversity created by the United Nations. Gabon is the first country that signed this international agreement in two thousand and eleven, associated with iboga particularly, as a way to respond to the growing concerns raised by published investigations that iboga's dwindling wild reserves, of iboga's dwindling wild reserves, which were severely penalizing Gabonese traditionalists. In simple terms, Nagoya Protocol stands for a fair trade reciprocity policy that respects that iboga is a resource that is endemic in a particular region of the world and upholds benefit sharing, protecting the people, traditions, and culture associated. So far, B O T F has managed to facilitate the first exportation of material under Nagoya to our partner, Terognosis, founded by Jonathan Dickinson. Terognosis has conducted laboratory testing and have completed the purchase of the first product batch from A to E, one of our community's pilot farm. An example of reciprocity in action, the Terognosis-Nagoya contract includes two types of benefits, monetary benefits and non-monetary benefits. Monetary benefits are shared from the sale of the product as well as profits generated down the line from any research and development. Non-monetary benefits include the sharing of information and research opportunities. This is the first agreement of its kind in Gabon, but it is based on a similar access and benefits agreements around the world, such as the industry-wide agreement for rooibos tea and agreements related to other pharmaceutical, food, and timber products. Considering that Gabon has made a major contribution to ibogaine research worldwide, being the leading source of supply, considering that almost all international treatment centers using ibogaine advertise on the Gabonese origin of this resource, considering that the ibogaine market will always have an impact on the iboga market, as many people who are treated with ibogaine alkaloid later come to iboga itself, considering that Gabonese traditionalists possess essential knowledge concerning the use of this resource, which has largely inspired modern scientific research, and finally, considering that many opiate addicts living in the U.S.A. originate from the African continent, in particular the Congo Basin. Gabon and its traditional communities call on their right to position themselves as suppliers of iboga, ibogaine, or purified total extracts, as well as collaborators in research projects governed by the Nagoya regulations and focused on the form and content of therapeutic outlets. We are here to stand in solidarity with this Commission's ibogaine treatment plans. Because of Brian Hubbard and the Commission's pioneering interest in reciprocity, upholding our own directive of supporting the traditional and natural cultural heritage of Gabon and the stewards of this ancient knowledge of iboga, this being at the very root of the healing process that we have heard about from numerous people throughout this hearing. It is hugely gratifying for us to understand this willingness and openness to the Gabonese context. This is very rare, with the exception of our few and precious donors, particularly the Indigenous Medicine Conservation Fund, whose key work is vital for our sustainability. There is a way that all can benefit from this medicine's resource, and the Commission here unifies the scientific field as well as the traditional connection to this medicine and does not leave anyone out. Everyone has a seat at the table. That reflects and resonates with the Buete community practices found in Gabon. I would like to end with two quotes, first from the American naturalist John Muir, who said, "When we try to pick out anything by itself, we find it hitched to everything else in the universe." And second, from Dr. Martin Luther King, "Their destiny is tied up with our destiny, and their freedom is inextricably bound to our freedom." This is the reason Blessings of the Forest has decided to offer our support to this movement and to make sure that Gabonese traditional leaders like our honorary president, Master Mubei Boal, are heard today. This breathes hope into the possibility that such an approach could help heal all those concerned, not just the parts that we see whose pain is evident in the American context, but also that hidden element of the Gabonese context that has, until this time, had no voice. I will now give Master Mubei Boal the floor, speaking as a representative of the Buete traditions of Gabon. Thank you.
Ladies and gentlemen, I am Mubei Boal, attorney-at-law at the Gabonese bar, honorary president of the Blasting of the Forest Non-Governmental Organization, and senior director of the Mangabanzambi National Association. Mangabanzambi is a non-political organization under Gabonese law, bringing together practitioners from the main families of the Guete-Misoko Rite in its various ancestral branches. It works to raise awareness of the richness of Gabon's cultural and natural heritage in general and defend iboga in particular, as well as all the plant essentials used in traditional methods. As such, I am initiated into the ancestral rites of Buete and Pratiche-Misoko branch. I am in charge of a temple, and I am also an initiating spiritual path. I would like to thank the honorable members of the Kentucky Commission for the honor of sharing with you my opinion on your actions, which also affect my traditional community. In the immemorial time of mankind, our ancestors, through a purely empirical approach far from modern laboratories, discovered on the land of Gabon that iboga plant had multi-dimensional virtues, essentially used by traditional communities in the ritual and the therapeutic practices of the various branches of Buete. Iboga revolved itself very earlier on as a sacred plant because it enables the initiate to commune with the divine, to heal the sick body and spirit. All of that empirical, the original approach which enabled our ancestor to discover the virtues of iboga has the value on intellectual work, and consequently, their descendants must benefit from the unprecipitable rights attached to its exploitation throughout the world. The traditional communities, who are the direct heirs to this intellectual work and cultural heritage, and who continue their ancestral ritual practices around iboga, have been powerless for centuries to observe the degradation of the natural environment due to the unbridled exploitation of the forest and in particular of this sacred plant, thus strengthening the cultural, economic, and social equilibrium. The cries of distress of these traditional communities have been heard thanks to the persistent action of certain non-governmental organizations such as Blessings of the Forest and the affirmative political of the government of Gabon, the first country in the world to have signed the Nagoya Protocol in two thousand and eleven. Your Kentucky Commission's action to eradicate opiate addiction and more proudly to strengthen international mechanisms for the defense of iboga and the interests of local traditional communities, guardians of the sacred plant, can only receive the unreserved support of these traditional communities through the National Association. through the National Association Mangabanzambi and Blessing of the Forest. In closing, I would like to express the hope that this commission will adopt a resolution that will lead our spirit and strengthen our ongoing commitment to the quality of life of people suffering from addiction, particularly in the United States and to the guardians of tradition in Gabon. What could be more sacred for men than to heal men with a sacred plant? For common good of the human. Thank you very much.
We want to have monoculture. We want to access only Iboga that is planted. It should be Iboga and all the other plants useful. The agrumes, the marine herbs, the medicines. It needs to be a diversity of plants, of rich ones. We encourage really planting, in fact. We encourage really planting in circumscribed areas. We need to be able to say, how many Ibogas do you have? So we're going to count everything and then we're going to record it. I have several hands. There are young of you who want to be motivated to help us. They're welcome.
Here, same process. But since the rich land is colonized, it's not just here.
They're scared, in fact, of the bees.
Thank you so much.
There any questions or comments from commission members to Dr. Nassim? Thank you for your long journey and your presence here today, sir. Thank you. Next, we have a recorded statement from former governor of Texas, Rick Perry.
Ladies and gentlemen of the Kentucky opioid abatement program, it's my privilege to appear before you today and I'm reminded that my elected public service career started as a young member of the Texas Legislature. I want to thank you for your service and your sacrifice, not just to your state of Kentucky, but to our country as well. Now, the additional honor I had to serve as the governor of the great state of Texas for 14-plus years and then as our Secretary of Energy only makes today more poignant. I realize the irony of me being here, advocating for research into a powerful psychoactive substance. You know, five years ago, I would not have foreseen nor believed that my name and Ibergain would be in the same sentence, nor sure whether I even knew what Ibergain was. But my journey from skeptic to supporter is rooted in my desire for results and in the undeniable potential of Ibergain to transform lives. My journey began with a young man who worked with me at the Department of Energy. He's a former Navy SEAL named Morgan Luttrell, who's now a US Congressman and a vocal supporter of Ibergain Research. Through him and his twin brother Marcus, who lived for a time with my wife, who's a registered nurse, and myself at the governor's mansion in Texas, we started to understand deeply the challenge of the situation. And we were trying to find solutions to help heal this young man. And what I've seen over the last four years in particular is that this treatment, it works. It works when all else seems to fail. In my home state of Texas, uh, which is a very conservative Republican-dominated state, we passed House Bill 1802, which allowed for clinical trials with psilocybin and related therapeutics. This, this was our perspective. Why wouldn't we explore clearly these breakthrough treatments, given that their potential to produce curative results not attainable with existing pharmacology? Why wouldn't we proceed thoughtfully, at an appropriate pace, but as fast as we can to ensure whether it works? And if it does, how to decide on proper dosage, proper treatment, proper follow-up? Right now, you have the opportunity for Kentucky to lead the nation on exploring this potentially revolutionary new treatment. Interestingly, at the federal level, Ibergain research is more supported by Republicans than Democrats, though there are supporters on both sides of the aisle, many of whom are former military and have seen the trauma and understand the positive results of these treatments firsthand for PTSD, for traumatic brain injury, opioid dependence. But this isn't a partisan issue. This is about saving individuals in terminal distress and restoring personal ownership of their lives. It's about giving them hope. So I'm before you today, not as a political figure, but as a fellow human being, asking you to consider the stunningly positive potential of Ibergain research. It's about taking care of individuals, about saving lives, about giving people their lives back. It's not a Democrat or a Republican issue. It's a human issue. I want to say thank you for your consideration and God bless you.
Our final witness of the afternoon is Lieutenant General Martin Steele, United States Marine Corps, now retired, who is the CEO of Reason for Hope and President of the Veterans Mental Health Leadership Coalition. Welcome, General Steele.
Thank you. Thank you, Chairman Hubbard and all the members of the commission, for your time, your attention, and most of all, for your leadership on this historic opportunity. We have heard some incredibly powerful and emotional testimony today from those before me, including from several members of the Veteran Mental Health Leadership Coalition and ambassadors of Reason for Hope. I'd also like to acknowledge and thank my colleagues who are not speaking here today, who have worked tirelessly behind the scenes in support of this initiative, including my co-founder of Reason for Hope, Mr. Brett Waters, who lost his mother to suicide, along with Jesse McLaughlin, and our co-founder and chief science officer, Dr. Lynette Avril from the Baylor College of Medicine, who lost her marine father to suicide. And she was instrumental in the passing of Texas House Bill 1802. As the CEO of Reason for Hope and the President of the Veteran Mental Health Leadership Coalition, I am honored and privileged to provide some closing remarks to the main portion of today's hearing. I am a retired lieutenant general in the United States Marine Corps. I had the privilege to serve for 34 and a half years, rising from private to three-star general and retiring as the chief operating officer of the Marine Corps in 1999. I am the stepchild of a man who was a fighter pilot in World War II. I never knew my real father. My stepfather was a prisoner of war in Stalag Luft 1 in Barth, Germany. He suffered immeasurably from post-traumatic stress for the remainder of his life, never abusive to my mother nor my siblings and I, but he died in a VA hospital on November the 11th, Veterans Day, in 1995, from alcohol abuse. Upon retiring, I served as president and chief executive officer of the Intrepid Sea, Air and Space Museum, the largest naval museum in the world in New York City, after which I served as the executive director of Military Partnerships in the Office of Research and Innovation at the University of South Florida in Tampa, Florida, where I had the privilege to work with scientists exploring the comorbidities with traumatic brain injury, post-traumatic stress, addiction, military sexual trauma, prosthetics, robotics and burns. During that period, I testified three times before the Congress of the United States on the hopeful mitigation of suicides. In 2015, I was nominated by your Senator Mitch McConnell to serve on the VA Commission on Care, looking at the future of VA health care, which was, at the time, enduring some tremendous stress because they were not meeting the needs of the veterans who have spoken to you today, who had to look at viable alternatives to their care to save their lives. We met for over a year and made 18 recommendations to the President of the United States, the Congress of the United States and the Secretary of the VA. They became the Mission Act, the WISE Act and the PACT Act and several others, but they still haven't met all of the needs, which is what you all are about and what this is all about today. I also have the privilege to serve on the US Global Leadership Coalition on national security as a member of their advisory council, as well as several boards of other veteran nonprofit organizations. Although I am an Arkansas native, and I currently live in Florida, I was privileged to live in the great state of Kentucky while attending the US Army Armor Officer Advanced Course at Fort Knox, Kentucky, over 46 years ago. I was not only positively impacted by my instructors and leaders at the school at Fort Knox, but also by the wonderful citizens of the great Bluegrass State. It was a very special time for me, my wife of now 56 years, and our children. We now have three children and three grandchildren. Today is my 77th birthday. Thank you. My whole family, including my grandchildren, are thrilled that I am with you today and with them today. My son, who's a retired Marine Colonel, a combat helicopter pilot, an attack helicopter pilot and President Bush 43's pilot on Marine One for four years, with three combat tours in Afghanistan, says to me just a couple of days ago, "Dad, this is a moral obligation, not only for you, but for all of them to tell their stories and for you to be able to make a decision which is going to change the lives of Americans." You are all so well aware that the opioid crisis has wrought havoc on Kentucky and broader Appalachia, including my native state of Arkansas. As you've heard today, families and communities have been torn apart at the seams due to the opioid use disorder, with an overwhelming loss of lives to overdose. My own brother-in-law in Arkansas from an automobile accident, took only one weekend to be addicted to OxyContin and suffered for the next 15 years of his life with that addiction, taking over 420 milligrams a day. I met with him Sunday in preparation for coming to you today and he told me his story again with my younger sister by his side, who is an OB-GYN nurse who saved his life. Because of his addiction to OxyContin, he can't remember 10 years of his life, has no recollection of what happened to him during those 10 years. His stepson had to bury all the pills in the backyard as my sister helped wean him off 460 milligrams of that addictive drug. I cannot express enough how devastated I am for the losses experienced by some of the speakers who have come here today, including my colleague, Michael Punky Higgs and the loss of his daughter, and Susan Osterman and the loss of her beloved son. And I am so willing and honored and thrilled that they share their stories in front of all of you in a total pursuit of what are we going to do to help others as we move forward. I wish there were an easy answer to this seemingly insurmountable crisis. Unfortunately, there is not. However, I do know, as was said earlier today, that doing the same things over and over and expecting different results is the definition of insanity. As a two-tour combat veteran in Vietnam, one is an enlisted Marine and one is an officer and also in the first Gulf War, with a conservative background like mine, I am often asked why I came out of retirement specifically to engage in this work with Brett Waters, Dr. Lynette Avril, Jesse McLaughlin and Adam R. The answer is frustration, total frustration. I was in New York City on the Intrepid on 9/11, which has been mentioned three times today in this hearing, that beautiful Tuesday morning when those planes crashed into the towers. I invited the head of the FBI to bring agents to this magnificent ship from World War II, the Korean War and Vietnam, to use it as a headquarters for the investigation into that lethal attack. Within 48 hours, we had 750 FBI agents using the Intrepid as a headquarters. This is my identification card from one of those towers. Mutilated, you can tell that it's mine, but it was presented to me four years later by- mine, but it was presented to me four years later by Police Commissioner of New York, Ray Kelly, when they found it in the debris, four years later. For those of you who follow what happened on 9/11 and the subsequent conditions with all the first responders, we lost so many people, so many. My challenge is, is that I was involved. My challenge is, is that all of these young men and women who went on and served our country selflessly in so many multiple tours of combat, six, eight, ten tours of combat over the ten-year, twenty-year, endless global war on terror. They're here today. They are survivors. They are honoring all those loved ones and brothers and sisters in arms who are not survivors, who have paid the price by either death by suicide or overdose or addiction. It's our time. It's our time to do something about it. My frustration with the lack of urgency and support from our government for bold initiatives with the potential to create transformational change to mental and behavioral health care, despite so many people suffering and dying every day as a result of the opioid and mental health crisis has come to the point of now. For years, I have frustratingly witnessed us continue down the same flawed path of traditional treatments despite their clear limitations. While these treatments are important, lifesaving tools for a few, they are simply not enough for most, as you have heard from so many here today. Thus, I am honored and humbled to support the great state of Kentucky in this innovative ibogament research initiative. As you have heard, ibogaine is not a magic bullet. However, the commission has heard overwhelming, overwhelming testimony supporting that ibogaine, when used with careful medical screening, treatment protocols, oversight, it can be safely provided to lead to rapid and robust improvement, entirely eliminating withdrawal for some patients in a way that current treatments simply cannot match. It will save lives. It will bring people back. It will create love. It'll restore families. Ibogaine will not be appropriate for everyone, but for many people out there who have not benefited from what is currently available, this initiative should provide a reason for hope, a reason for hope that a new option is on the horizon that will help those suffering from opioid use disorder experience not only freedom from dependency, but as you've heard today, profound, profound spiritual and emotional healing. This is a historic opportunity for the citizens of the great state of Kentucky, and Reason for Hope and the Veteran Mental Health Leadership Coalition are committed to partnering with this commission to ensure the success of this initiative. We are also committed to ensuring other states follow Kentucky's lead and to pursuing the federal regulatory reforms that will reduce the barriers to research, increasing federal funding opportunities, and ensure that once clinical trials are underway, Kentucky can serve as a hub for compassionate use of ibogaine under the Right to Try Act, as there are simply too many people who do not have the time to wait for full FDA approval. Otherwise, those fortunate enough to have the means to do so will continue seeking treatment outside of our country, as you've heard so often today. It is time to put an end to this unconscionable practice where over a thousand veterans alone have had to go to Mexico, Costa Rica, Brazil, Central and South America to get this treatment. This is the greatest country on earth. It's the greatest country God ever put on the face of the earth. Our nation owes its citizens a viable alternative to something that's not working. You have it here in Kentucky. You have this moment in history, this moment in time. To conclude, I implore each and every member of the commission to support this initiative. A unanimous vote will send a message that will resonate loudly nationwide, because you heard from so many, including the former governor of the state of Texas, this is not a political issue. This is a human issue. This is about saving lives and preserving our way of life, and this the greatest nation on earth. The time for change is upon us, and the state of Kentucky is leading the way. Thank you again, Chairman Hubbard and everyone else here for your work on behalf of this great state. We look forward, all of us, all of us, look forward to making history together, to making all of this happen. God bless you. Let's go out and make it happen. Thank you. Are there any questions or comments from commission members for General Steele? General, thank you for your life, your service, and your time here this afternoon, and happy birthday.
Thank you. God bless all of you.
We have four individuals signed up for five-minute public comments, and I am going to apologize in advance if I don't get the names exactly right. The first individual signed up is Dr. Jishan Chowdhury. You have my five minutes, sir.
Thank you. Good afternoon. I want to begin by thanking the commission for taking the bold step for having this hearing. Most importantly, I want to thank the brave individuals who came to speak here today. In being heard here today, I want you to know that sharing your lived experience, and I hope the action that it inspires, is part of our collective hearing. My name is Jishan Chowdhury. I am a physician and founder of Journey Colab, a psychedelic research company. At Journey Colab, we work with addiction treatment centers to become psychedelic clinical trial sites and research leaders. We are currently running the only psychedelic clinical trial in the country with a residential treatment facility, bringing this important research out of the lab and into the real-world setting of rehab. At the last hearing, this panel asked critical questions about how to ensure safe and ethical clinical research with ibogaine and what precautions and oversights would be needed. I am here because I work every day with the providers in the trenches that Mr. Chandler mentioned at the beginning of this hearing. These are the people that, as Mr. Chandler aptly said, are working their tails off but don't have the tools they need. In working closely with addiction treatment providers here in Kentucky and across the country, I believe we have the partners ready and able to conduct this research responsibly. These experienced providers have the clinical resources called for by this panel, the doctors, the nurses, monitoring capabilities, and so on. They have the oversight needed for controlled administration and rigorous study. In short, innovative providers here in Kentucky stand ready to become leaders in ibogaine research, and they are willing to take the steps necessary to administer treatments safely and effectively in controlled research environments. Mr. Hubbard, earlier today, you talked about fortifying the treatment and recovery infrastructure in the state. There is already extensive expertise on the ground in Kentucky to conduct this important work in a responsible manner that balances safety, clinical, scientific rigor, and compassion. Kentucky has the chance to lead the way. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Next is Dr. Veronica Slutsky.
Thank you so much to the commission and the Veteran Mental Health Leadership Coalition for this opportunity. My name is Veronica Slutsky and I'm a board-certified adult psychiatrist. I trained at Vanderbilt University School of Medicine and George Washington University School of Medicine. I treat patients with depression, PTS, and addiction on a daily basis, and I'm licensed to practice medicine here in Kentucky, and I do so by telehealth. I see a great need to develop new treatments, particularly in the field of addiction medicine, as current treatments are woefully inadequate for many patients. While alcohol and opioid addictions have incredibly high relapse rates with standard treatments, for some conditions, such as cocaine or methamphetamine dependence, there is no standard recommended pharmacotherapy currently available at all. Ibogaine-assisted therapy is a promising treatment that can address not only opioid dependence, but other frequently comorbid conditions, such as PTS, alcohol dependence, and other addictions with the same treatment. It deserves attention and research. I've consulted with physician colleagues who treat patients with ibogaine and individuals who have successfully completed the treatment. As a result, I believe that this treatment holds great promise. We are in the midst of a mental health crisis in our country, and addiction is playing a large role in this crisis. The suicide rate is increasing across populations and is at an all-time high, having increased about three percent from 2021 to 2022. Untreated addiction is a serious risk factor for suicide and other deaths of despair. I'd like to add that as physicians, we are trained that any treatment has its risks. We are taught to give treatment if the benefit outweighs the risk. And while ibogaine may have some cardiac risks that you might be aware of, many of these risks can be mitigated with monitoring and screening. In case of addiction that leads to death despite current treatments, that the benefit appears to greatly outweigh the risk, we need further research to determine how to administer this medicine in a safe and effective way. And therefore, I respectfully ask that funding be allocated to further study the healing potential of this treatment, so that physicians like myself can one day help patients suffering with these conditions. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Dan Verwest. Is there Mr. Dan Verwest here? All right. Mr. Rex Elsas.
Mr. Chairman Member to the Commission, I'm Rex Elsas. I'm chairman of the Reed Foundation, Reaching Everybody in Distress, which was named for my son, who died June 2nd, 2019, of an overdose. And I believe that overdose is preventable, and it's within your hands to do something about it. The leadership, I have, since I learned about what you were doing, I've been here at every public hearing. I'm just your neighbor next door, Ohio. And it's from this hill that the greatest light is shining to heal trauma in our nation. And my son left me with some work to do. In Ohio, we are in-state prisons every week and in rehabs across the state doing music therapy. We have a two-member office in Washington, DC, that advocates for plant medicines to be rescheduled for the purposes of healing trauma. To my knowledge, this is the only opioid abate commission in the country that has had the vision and leadership to do something more than create the same practices that we've done, as has been referenced, which has only a four percent recovery rate. But a great opportunity to distribute endless supplies of money that the settlements will provide. Wow. Your leadership, this commission, has decided to chart a new course. I don't know what people speak of a silver bullet, but I do know what God's blessing is. And to me, that hope is a silver bullet. It's a hope of trauma being treated, so I don't apologize for the hope I have for the work you're doing and the healing that it will bring, because I believe if I had had the option, Reed Elsas would be alive. His walk provided a understanding of things that I never thought I would be open to, including plant medicines. But what I know is, there's healing and there's hope, and I'm looking at the men and women who are leading more than anyone else in this country right now to provide us the greatest hope. And for that, I've come to see my neighbor and say thank you.
It is 3:19. We have this room for eleven minutes, which means in the event that there are two individuals who wish to speak who have not signed up, please identify yourself. Yes, sir. You ought to come forward.
Hello, commission. I figure as a Kentuckian and perhaps the most experienced psychedelic practitioner from or in Kentucky, I really needed to speak. Iboga is not my medicine of choice. In 2013, I started a psilocybin retreat center in Jamaica. I treated over a thousand people there, administered well over three thousand doses of psilocybin, many of which were veterans, retired, intelligent officials, people from all walks of life. I've never seen anything that can bring people together across all walks of life like psychedelics. It's been amazing. As a Kentuckian, I've been very, very proud of my state. I prayed for seven years while in Jamaica that I would be able to come back to Kentucky and perform this work here for my community, and I have been afforded that opportunity for which I am very grateful. I'm also rather embarrassed of our state at times because we have promoted addiction just blatantly. I'm the grandson of a tobacco farmer, moonshiners, and I've seen the pain that those products of Kentucky have caused, and I am extremely hopeful, because Kentucky has done wonderful things for this world as well, I'm extremely hopeful that this is another opportunity for us to show the world how forward-thinking we actually are. Kentucky, you all know the amazing individuals that have come from this state and the impact that so many of our people have had, and I hope dearly that the seven of you will also share and contribute to that positive impact and the reputation that Kentucky truly deserves in our country. Thank you so much. That's all.
Thank you. Does anybody else wish to speak?
Yes, sir.
Hello, I'm Evan Clark. I'm a graduate student at Spalding University's Clinical Mental Health Counseling Program. I'm also a therapist at the University of Louisville's Counseling Center. I'm a harm reduction specialist, an ayahuasca master, plant diet preparation and integration coach, and a former facilitator at an ayahuasca center in Peru for over a year. I'm also a product of the opiate epidemic. Eight years ago, I went to see a doctor for a mental health provider to get off my OxyContin addiction that precipitated from being over-prescribed opiates for a minor knee injury. that precipitated from being over-prescribed opiates for a minor knee injury. I'll give you all just a quick glance of what it was like for me to find services and what those services were. So I went to see a doctor, a psychiatrist, who put me on a regiment of, well, let's list the medicines. I was prescribed three 8-milligram Suboxone strips. I was prescribed three 30-milligram Adderalls. I was prescribed two 2-milligram Xanax bars per day. I was prescribed Klonidine, Lexapro, two Somas, four 800 gabapentin, all at the same time, for three and a half years. I had never used intravenous heroin, ever. Never, it never came up in my mind. While I was under his care, I did. I had no help, no support through our mental health care system in Kentucky. There was nobody out there for me, no one. After I'd woken up from an overdose with my dad and my brother hovering over me, I knew it was time. I was gonna die. Thankfully, in Kentucky, we take pride in our religious freedom, and I was able to seek the help through an ayahuasca church in Berea, Kentucky. After two ceremonies, I was cured. I had never, I had no more withdrawal symptoms. I enrolled in school, graduated, cum laude, and I made it my passion to help people that are suffering as I once did. So as we build the foundation for this psychedelic renaissance in Kentucky, I'm gonna ask you all just for three things. First, provide the Kentucky universities the ability to study ibogaine, and not just the substance itself, but to train the therapists to assist in preparation, facilitation, and the integration to meet the demand of clients. Two, to make this treatment accessible by the poorest Kentuckians. Ibogaine treatments, $8,000 to $10,000 when these people go abroad. And you see in Oregon right now with the psilocybin initiative, I've seen therapists that are charging $10,000 for two treatments. You know, and I've only seen as low as like $3,000 for one treatment. And finally, since we're taking this plant from Africa and we're bringing it over here to use to help Kentuckians, I think it is very important that we explicitly include people of color through education, financial assistance, and training of therapists that are people of color. That's it. Thank you all so much.
We shall end the way we began, and that is with a deep expression of thanks and gratitude to everyone who took the time, the expense, and the significant imposition of long-distance travel to come to Frankfurt, Kentucky to speak on this very important issue that is now before this commission and will be considered over the coming months. I want to especially thank our veterans who served this country, who were willing to lay it all on the line for us, and who have done so again today with their visceral candor and the way in which they have overcome what was put upon them by circumstances that they volunteered to confront on our behalf. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. To all those who are non-veterans, as well as the family members of those who have spoken today, you have revealed and have taken the time to share the most tragic and difficult circumstances any human being can face. Thank you for your courage. Thank you for the empathy that you have demonstrated to every Kentuckian with your presence here and your devotion to see that we, as a people, overcome an opioid epidemic that has been killing us now for 26 years. Last but not least, I want to thank my fellow commission members who have demonstrated immense devotion to the significant work this commission must do, who have traveled across this state, who have spent hours uncompensated reviewing hundreds of applications for funds that we're only gonna get one strategic opportunity to spend constructively. And I wish to applaud everybody who sits up here with me today for your time, attention, and devotion. I wish everybody safe travels home. Thank you for being here. God bless you and God bless the Commonwealth of Kentucky.